United States of America.
Thank you. In compliance with NJSA 10 colon 4, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Towne planning board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations. Roll call please. In compliance with NJSA 10 colon 4, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Towne planning board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations. Roll call please.
Mr. Brassi?
Here.
Mr. Bernstein?
Here.
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Riker?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Marzo? Mr. Heller? Mr. Wall?
Here.
Dr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Herman?
Here. Before we get started, I would like to call up the attorney for Block 801 lot 62 and 63, 394 Chandler Holdings LLC.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Lance Goldman and Spitzer. On behalf of the applicant, thank you for taking me first. I'm actually going to ask that the board carry the application. When we submitted the application, we thought that the application was a fully conforming application because that's generally the goal. I try to advise the clients to make both the planning board's job a little easier and my job a little bit easier. But Mr. Peters correctly called me and advised me that he thought we needed a few variances. And I looked at the ordinance, I agreed with them. We did notice for the variances, but in retrospect, we'd rather than try to go for the variances, we're going to adjust the application so that when we come back, it'll be variance free.
Thank you. Are you okay with the June 19th, 2023 meeting date?
Hold on one second. Yes, the June 19th date should work. And I presume you're going to find a bigger room?
Looks like it's going to be necessary. So yes, we're going to work on it. There will be a requirement of further notice?
Yes, the applicant will re-notice this application for the June 19th date as soon as you tell me where we'll hold the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Can I please get a motion to carry it?
Ms. Chairman, Ms. Chairman, just real quick, when can we expect the revised plans?
I would expect you to get revised plans in between four to six weeks.
Thank you very much.
Can I please have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Okay, so this application will be carried to the June 19th, 2023 meeting with the requirement of further notice. Thank you. So anybody here for this application, it's not going to be heard tonight. Now just now I'm just going to move right ahead over here. Yeah, the board will not have any further discussions on that. Yes. Yes, the application was for 394, the Block 801 lot 62 and 63, 394 Chandler Holdings LLC. That application will be carried to the June 19th meeting. There will be no discussions tonight about the application as it has been carried. And the board will not be hearing the application tonight. If anybody's here for that application, it will not be heard. Now we're going to move right ahead. We have can I please get a motion for the payment of the voucher for the recording secretary?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we have minutes. Thank you. Now we have minutes for the February 21st, 2023 meeting. Thank you, Mr. Riker. If anybody would like to leave to talk outside in the room, you are welcome, but in here, please be which application are you here for? Chandler Road has been carried. It will not be heard tonight. I'm going to repeat, it's not going to be heard tonight. It'll be heard on the Okay. There is no application for Farmingdale Road on for tonight. There are two applications, there are three applications on for tonight. The base Yakov of Jackson LLC will still be heard tonight. I mean, I'm assuming. The 394 Chandler Holdings will be carried. It will not be heard tonight. It will be heard on the June 19th meeting. So it's not going to be heard tonight. We're not going to have any discussions, any comments about it. It will be heard by the the location. We always have our meetings here. As we see a very large crowd and a lot of interest in the application, we will be looking for a larger venue to house the application. And we will notice accordingly with any larger venue if it may become available. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute recess while people leave. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Can I please get a motion for the approval of the minutes of the February 21st, 2023 meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Engineering and planning matters. Mr. Clea.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One item, one item tonight regarding an administrative approval for Great Adventure. We haven't really seen any of these applications because of the pandemic. But historically, every year, Great Adventure comes with their capital improvements. This one's for 2023. It's a pretty simple procedure. Basically, the tilt-a-whirls out and the teacups are in, depending on the, on the application. The applicant is here to answer any specific questions the board may have. But its new construction involves a 30 to 40-foot-tall water place structure with seven water slides. It's being built in the previously disturbed portion of the theme park site. It uses permitted. All the setbacks are met. I'm the only question we would really have regarding the lighting. If there's any lighting associated with the facility that might impact the adjacent properties. But because it's so deep in the park, I really don't think so. But I'll leave it to the applicant to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Peters.
Mr. Clea, I think covered it all. Property is correctly zoned. Generally speaking, the administrative approvals are done for previously disturbed portions of the site. If they come in and want to build one of the big giant roller coasters, they'll come back here for a site plan approval. If it's in a previously disturbed portion of the site, it is in fact a conforming use in the zone. They come here for the board to administratively approve that. And that's a process we've been following probably for close to 30 years.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeffer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Pfeffer, attorney of the applicant. First, I just want, on behalf of the applicant, I want to thank you for accommodating us. We originally were given a date later on. It was almost in the summer. And your attorney and your professionals accommodated us to let us come in now so we can get the work done for the season. So thank you. Your professionals indicated exactly what we're doing here. We're swapping out a ride, some upgrades. I do have a representative of Six Flags as well as the engineer, if you would like to hear testimony from him. But we are, like, as it's indicated, it's previously disturbed property, and we're just swapping out one ride for another ride. With regard to the lighting, though, there's no lighting specifically associated with this. We're not changing any of those items.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
No, I have a statement.
Brassi.
As Mr. Clea said, we can't count how many years Great Adventure's come in for these administrative approvals. They have never, ever tried to move forward without doing this all the years they're there. And things like this, they probably could have done, and the people would have never known it. I really give credit to Great Adventure, their professionals. They have never, ever skipped coming in and tried to go around the corner on it. And we truly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I please get a motion to move the executive approval?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Brassi.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
Mr. Herring.
Yeah.
Mr. Riker.
Yeah.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Marzo. Mr. Heller. Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Herman.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. If anybody has come in since the Chandler Road application has been carried for tonight, it will not be heard for tonight. Anybody's here for that application, we will not be commenting on the application, nor will we be listening to any comments on that application for tonight. Thank you. Moving ahead, we have one resolution for tonight, Mr. R.
Resolution number 2023 dash 08. Resolution of the Planning Board of the Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey. Renting final major subdivision approval for Aaron Mansour Luxury Drive 1426 LLC. Block 13401, lots 2.02, 4.01, 15, 16, 24, and 26. Eligible to vote, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Fleming, Mr. Herring, Mr. Riker, Mr. Wall, Mr. Marzo, Mr. Herman.
Thank you. Before we call for a motion, can we please close the doors? There's a lot of noise in the hallway and it's hard to get a proper record with all the background noise. Okay, thank you. Can I please get a motion to move the resolution?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
Mr. Herring.
Yeah.
Mr. Riker.
Yeah.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Mr. Marzo.
Yeah.
Mr. Herman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a change to the agenda schedule. Block 4301 lot 15 dash 135 Commodore LLC will be carried to the 5-1 2023 meeting. Can I please get a motion to move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, miscellaneous legal matters. Do you have anything?
Nothing at this time.
Oh, my apologies. We have Block 2501 lot 3340 West Commodore LLC. Originally scheduled for the 4-3-23 meeting, they requested it to be carried to the 6-5 2023 meeting. There will be a requirement for further notice. Can I please get a motion to carry? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move right ahead to the applications. So we're going to start off with Block 15601 and 15701 lot 2, lot 6, Lot 15, Base Yakov of Jackson LLC. Believe you already heard from some of your professionals, so.
Thank you.
We'll just hear from, we have any?
Nothing additional, Mr. Chairman. We started the application, I believe, on the 21st. On February 21st, and I think we summarized our reports, and I believe the applicant was basically in the middle of his testimony. And I believe traffic is the next item up.
Mr. Peters?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Jennings.
Sure. Again, for the record, Donna Jennings from the law firm of Lenz Goldman and Spitzer on behalf of the applicant. As was correctly indicated, we were here back on February 21st. We presented the applicant's representative, Mr. Rottenberg, and we also had our site engineer, Bill Stevens, both testified, were cross-examined. I'm here this evening. I'm adding a witness, Ian Borden, because there were some questions regarding the septic design. And since Ian prepared our environmental impact statement, he volunteered to come and talk a little bit about the septic design and what's going to go there. In addition, then I'll have our traffic engineer, John Ray, testify, and then our architect will testify.
Okay, thank you. Raise your right hands. Probably swear a firm testimony, information, questions, or comments will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Please say your name, spell your last, and your credentials for the record.
Certainly. Ian Borden, B O R D E N, a professional planner, licensed in the state of New Jersey. I am the president of Professional Design Services, having a bachelor's science degree from Rutgers University a mere 40 years ago, and been working in the field for that long with the president of PDS for the last 25 years. And testified before this board many times. Thank you. Yes, I felt that being in the audience last week, I thought it helpful to testify for a few minutes, I'll be brief, on the septic proposed wastewater disposal system. Bill had provided very good testimony on that. I thought some more background might be helpful because as he had testified, there is no public sewer available to this property. So the sewage will be disposed of by groundwater discharge or individual septic disposal system. And as he had testified, that that system will require permits from the state of New Jersey. In particular, there's three approvals required. One is a Water Quality Management Plan Amendment. Second is an Egyptese permit, which is a New Jersey Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit, and then third is a Treatment Works approval, which is an actual construction approval. And those are required because any system that's over 2,000 gallons per day on an average daily flow is required to get those approvals, and that applies to any project. So I think I thought it helpful to provide some background onto that because this board, most boards do not see many of those. So what we have is, I had asked Anthony to put up Exhibit A 20, the new exhibit that we've added. And Exhibit A 20 is a map, is Jackson Township. This is taken from the DEP records. It doesn't show the entire town, but I like how it's blown up here. What I'm describing with my pointer is the boundary. You see Monmouth Road up here to the top left, the boundary with Plumset down the left side, and Manchester across the bottom, and then Lakewood to the right. And what this indicates is the various Egyptese permits in the township. In other words, the message I'm trying to portray is that these systems are not unusual. There's 27 licensed Egyptese permit systems in the, in Jackson Township alone. The site is marked with the green star in the center, basically the center. And you'll notice there's four very close proximity to us, one of which just to our east along Route 527, 528, is South Windsor Home Park. I'm sure we're all familiar with that. It's a fairly large community of residential buildings, and it has had a groundwater discharge permit for many years. You have others. Question was asked about schools last week. I remember somebody said, is it unusual to have schools on individual discharge systems? And the answer is in Jackson it is because the public schools are generally on public sewer, but it is not atypical at all. You have the Ocean County Vocational Technical School, which is down on Route 571, that's on an Egyptese permit. And then I don't show them on here because they're just little, didn't want to make the map too small. But if you go further west up into Upper Freehold, Millstone, New Egypt, all of their school systems, New Egypt High School, New Egypt Grammar School, Millstone Schools, they're all on Treatment Works and Egyptese systems, all having groundwater discharge systems. So we have both large residential communities as well as schools that are located on these systems. This system is proposed to have estimated flow of about, as noted in the environmental impact statement, of about 22,600 gallons per day. Just to give it a feeling of scale, the Southwind system is permitted at 45,000 gallons per day. So the Southwind Systems is nearly double what we're proposing for this system. We also added an Exhibit Anthony A 18, if you don't mind, just to talk about the system itself and what the system does. Again, we're talking, we're not here to dig into the design of it. That is a function of the state approval of it. But this is a, two basically pictures of it. This is what is visually, this is a we're proposing what they call an ampedrodom system. It's a bioreactor system. Basically, the goal of any treatment, it's necessary to have a treatment system as part of this type of discharge because the stated goal of the New Jersey State Regulations, which we have to comply with, is a maximum nitrate of two part per million. That's the maximum discharge to groundwater. That's the maximum nitrate level in the discharge. So in order to obtain, in order to achieve that, there needs to be a treatment of the waste. I would add that many of the systems that I described do not have treatment. But certainly the newer ones do, and we will be required to. So what initially, what we're looking at is there's different manufacturers of these systems that are certified by the DEP. that are certified by the DEP. Uh, and the board is probably familiar with, we've, we've presented subdivisions before where there's single-family lots that have these treatment-type systems in them. They've been, uh, there's been a pilot program in the Pine Lands for the last nearly twenty years where any lot that's, and that's less than three acres in the Pine Lands has to have its own treatment system in the septic system. This is just a larger version of that, but it's using the same technologies as are, as are certified by Pine Lands and by the DEP. And, and this particular manufacturer is what's called Amphadrome. It's manufactured by F R Mahoney. They're from Massachusetts. I think it's interesting that the design of these systems, uh, Mahoney, like many of these manufacturers, are, are housed in the New England area. They're, they're in Maine. And that is because these, these systems arose more than twenty years ago out of the Cape Cod and coastal Maine areas. Water quality in Cape Cod, they have much of the same soil conditions that we do, so, uh, they have been the forerunner of the technology. So, so this amphadrome system is, is a, is a very small building, which just houses the controls. Everything else is underground. You can see, uh, in the bottom part, these are concrete tanks. There's a sequence of tanks that, that basically are what I just, I mentioned is a bioreactor. In other words, you're, there's no chemical process involved. There's no chemicals being injected. What you're doing is you're, uh, you're creating, uh, it, and, and anaerobic environment where you're removing the, believe it, you're removing the oxygen from the environment to create a nitrogen-rich environment so that the bacteria feeds on the nitrogen, and that's how you remove the nitrogen from the waste. So, uh, basically, in these, in these tanks are a series of filters, uh, where they encourage bacteria to grow. There's sand filters, and the waste simply flows through them at a slow rate. And then the, the bacteria in the sand filters digest the nitrogen out of the domestic waste, and thereby the discharge is less than two-part per million. And that is a certified technology, uh, by Pine Lands and by the DEP.
And Ian, on our site plan, we indicated an area where we were proposing to put uh, this system is what you're showing the board today, something that's gonna fit in the area that we had selected.
That, that is correct. Yes, we confirmed today. Again, obviously, when Bill did the design, he his forty years, he knows what he's doing more than, more than I. Um, but yes, the, the, the space allocated for the, for the, for the tank systems as well as the disposal bed system where it ultimately is discharged to groundwater is more than adequately sized for the flow that we're expecting, anticipated for these, uh, schools.
So all the direct questions I had regarding this issue.
Thank you. I'd like to give Mr. Michalini on behalf of one of the neighbors a chance to cross-examine the witness. Please come up.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, Joseph Michelini from Mally Sherman and Michelini Brick, New Jersey, on behalf of Omega LLC, uh, which is a next-door neighbor owned in part by Jeff Bova, who also resides on Emma Lane, pretty much adjacent to the, uh, to the property. Okay, uh, Mr. Borden, you've prepared an environmental impact statement, I believe you said, correct?
Uh, that is correct.
All right, and, uh, do you have that with you?
I do.
Okay. Does the board have copies of the environmental impact statement?
Yes, they were submitted with the initial application.
Right, but I want to make sure that they can refer to them if I'm asking him a question. You do have them. Okay, thank you. Um, so I just want to go through a couple of things that you referred to. Uh, first of all, uh, this system is allegedly required because there is no available sewer in the area. Is that correct?
Yes.
How far away is the sewer from this site?
I believe Bill had given that testimony at the last hearing.
He did not. Uh, can you tell us?
Could you pull up Exhibit A one, please, Anthony? Okay, I can tell you that there is sewer located in Grand Boulevard, uh, east of the site.
And do you know how far away that is?
I do not know. It's certainly more than a half a mile. I do not know the exact distance.
And is it possible to bring sewer to the site even though it's a half mile away?
This, this property is located, the answer is no. Uh, this property, that sewer in, in Grand Boulevard is one, is in what's called the central sewer service area. In, in Ocean County, uh, all sewer flows through treatment facilities constructed by the Ocean County Utilities Authority. And Ocean County has almost fifty years ago designated three different treatment plants with, with a corresponding service area. Southern, central, and northern. Uh, Jackson is a bit, a bit of a unique town because it contains area in both the central and the northern. And the sewer that I described in Grand Boulevard is in the central sewer service area, which is the southern portion of Jackson along the Whitesville and Groattown corridor. That sewer service area ends at the South Winds Mobile Home Park. So that sewer service area does not extend to this property. We would normally be in the northern sewer service area, but when the Ocean County Utilities Authority, uh, with, as required by DEP, when they remapped the, the sewered service areas in two thousand twelve, this area was not included in a sewer service area. So, even if honestly, even if we had access, physical access to sewer, the property is not in a sewer service area. So, and there is no sewer from the northern treatment plant in anywhere of close proximity to the, to the property.
Where is the closest sewer in the northern area?
The closest sewer in the northern would be in Bennetts Mills Road, uh, east of Butterfly Road.
And how far away from the site is that?
Oh, that's gotta be, as a crow flies, it's certainly a mile. It's
Okay.
By any route of roads, it would be more than, much more than that.
And could sewer be brought there, but simply would be a matter of cost?
No.
Why?
Again, it's not in the sewer service area.
So you're telling us that it's impossible to bring sewer to this area? Is that what you're telling us?
If we can send a man to the moon, nothing is impossible. It's certainly, it's certainly beyond the, uh, it's not something that's included in any of the master planning from the regional planning agencies such as the Ocean County Utilities Authority and the Jackson Township MUA. I believe it was entered into evidence, a, uh, documents from the JTMUA that with them stating that there's no sewer service available at the site.
Well, I believe the document said that it was too distant, not that it wasn't available.
Okay.
You can check the document. So, has there been any application to the Ocean County MUA to maybe make an exception and allow sewer to go to the southern service area?
Uh, no, there's been no application made, but, but nor, um, in my opinion, nor can it because the the central sewer service area, first of all, this property is not in the watershed that forms the central sewer service area. But, but more importantly, the central sewer's service area is contributory to systems in adjoining towns, in Tom's River in particular, that has no capacity. And I, and I would, I would advance as, as indications of that, that as I testified, South Winds Mobile Home Park is in the central sewer service area, yet it does not have public sewer.
And I believe your, uh, impact statement has to list both positive and negative impacts, correct?
Yes.
That's part of the requirement of the ordinance, is it not?
It is.
Okay, and one of the negative, uh, impacts is sewage to be discharged into subsurface disposal systems, meaning the septic system. Isn't that one of the negative impacts that you've listed?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a negative impact in your environmental impact statement. Wouldn't it be better then to put a school such as this in an area where there is existing sewer?
Well, I, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna correct. You're, you're stating, I, I disagree with the term negative impact. What, what the environmental impact says under chapter five is what's called, and I'm gonna read from the EIS, is called commitment of resources and unavoidable impacts. And, and what the EIS is saying is that that discharge to groundwater is a commitment of resource. It is taking water and discharging it to the ground. Every, every project has a commitment of resources, and that's an example of one for this project.
But isn't the, Jackson has its own EIS or environmental, uh, impact statement ordinance, do they not?
Absolutely.
And that requires you to quote, provide an assessment of both the adverse and positive impacts during and after construction, and then it goes to list a number of things that you're supposed to consider. Uh, and one of those is sewage disposal.
Yes.
Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Right, so one of the adverse impacts that you've listed in your report in, in conjunction with the environmental impact ordinance that Jackson Township has adopted is that the sewage is going to be essentially a septic system as opposed to connecting to the public sewer. Isn't that right?
I think, yes.
Okay, so wouldn't it be better then to locate a school like this in an area where there's already existing sewer?
Uh, no, I don't believe so because the whole point, you have to go back to the roots of the sewer service area mapping. The reason that large parts of the town are excluded from sewer service area mapping, uh, especially the northern sewer service area, is because they don't want sewers there. They want the water to be discharged back to the groundwater and recharge the aquifers. So by, 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 it doesn't, it's not meant to slow or stop development. That's the function of the township's own ordinance, which we comply with. But it's simply a matter of the, the DEP and, and the OCUA, primarily the DEP, has determined that maintaining groundwater recharge, and that's, you've heard many times Bill testify about stormwater management and how we recharge the stormwater runoff. The septic system is doing the same thing with the domestic waste. It's recharging to the groundwater.
All right, let me just understand. Are you saying that the DEP favors a plan where twenty-two thousand six hundred gallons of wastewater goes into eventually the Dove Mill branch, which goes into the Tom's River, every day that this school is in operation? Are you saying the DEP is favoring that?
I'm saying, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that they favor a plan where they do not provide sewer service to the entire township so as to encourage groundwater recharge.
Right, and you have to go to the DEP to get all these permits because they may not favor this plan. Isn't that correct?
In my opinion, they will favor this plan, but it's our, it's our burden to obtain that approval as all approvals.
And I want to direct your attention to the paragraph, I think it's the third page, or, let's see. One, two. It looks like page four where it says one point three utility plans. You see that in your report?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and I'm just gonna read the second, uh, the first sentence of the second paragraph and stop there. There are no public sewer facilities in this portion of Jackson, so the project will utilize individual wells. Stop right there. Are there individual wells being used by this?
No.
So that part of your report is inaccurate, correct?
That's correct.
And then it goes on to talk about septic, which you've mentioned. Now you, it also says in that paragraph, and you've mentioned this, that because the flow is more than two thousand gallons per day, um, that you need approval from, uh, the DEP for these various approvals, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, and you said earlier, and I said it in one of my questions, that is twenty-two thousand six hundred gallons per day of wastewater treated sewage that's gonna be ultimately making its way into the Dove Mill branch on this property, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, how many days is this school gonna be operating such that that kind of flow will continue in terms of what you, what you determined? Two hundred days a year, two hundred and fifty?
Um, that, that flow is a daily flow, so as far as I'm concerned, from an environmental perspective, that flow could be three hundred and sixty-five.
Excuse me, just please, just a little closer.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
That flow could be every day, every day of the year, as far as I'm concerned. It, it's not limited to a certain number of days per year.
So how many millions of gallons? As you have your phone, maybe you could do a little quick calculation, three sixty-five by twenty-two thousand six hundred. I've not done the calculation.
That's, uh, eight million gallons.
So eight million gallons of treated waste is going, or wastewater is going to be going into the Dove Mill branch over the course of one year as a result of this application.
Yes. And as I testified, South Winds, I don't know how old South Winds is, but it's certainly more than forty years old, has been doing that every year for forty years.
Right.
Double what we're proposing.
And if South Winds were here today, you would not advocate that for South Winds, would you?
I wouldn't, uh, advocate against it. I think it's a, um, I think it's a good environmental policy to recharge our groundwater aquifers.
And that was done forty years ago, and you know that each application stands on its own, correct?
Absolutely.
Right, so you don't know all the details of the South Wind application. You're not prepared to testify?
Oh, no, no, not at all.
As an expert on that tonight, are you?
No.
I didn't think so. I want to direct your attention to, uh, on the same page, two point one geograph, uh, at the bottom where it says two point zero, I'm sorry. Two point zero, site description and inventory. You see that?
Yes.
Okay, um, and you say several site investigations of the project site were conducted by the author from June through September two thousand and twenty-two, and the following inventory describes the existing environmental conditions out on site. First of all, uh, when in June did you do that?
I don't, I don't have the exact dates. I've visited the site a few times over the summer.
And did part of visiting the site and the investigation that you do involve taking soil borings?
Uh, I did not physically, personally witness the soil test, but those were done by a representative from my office.
Do you know what months they were done?
That would be listed on the site plans. I, I don't recall.
So you don't know if it was done in the spring when the high water table is highest? Or the water table, I'm sorry, is highest, or whether it was done some other part of the year?
I, I, I don't know the dates. That will be in the site plans.
So when you're talking about investigations from June to September, you're not talking about borings, correct?
That's correct.
All right, and the, uh, you go on and describe some things. I want to direct your attention to the EIS ordinance. Does the EIS ordinance require you to make very specific, um, keep a log of the investigation and, uh, with dates, times, weather conditions, specific site location? Does it require that?
No. Not to my knowledge.
You didn't do that?
No.
Do you have the EIS ordinance?
I do not.
Okay, let me just show it to you.
If you could just read into the record, uh, what he is looking at.
I, I will. And I'm just trying to get my, get the right sentence in my.
You may want to submit that as an exhibit if you're gonna be referencing it.
Thank you, sir. Let me do it a different way. Uh, I think it'd be easier if I just read the ordinance. Uh, the portion of the ordinance, I'm reading from chapter two forty-four, Land Use and Development Regulations, Article twelve, Design Standards and Improvement Specifications, Section two forty-four dash one eighty-nine, Environmental Impact Statement for the Township of Jackson, uh, and this is dated Monday, March sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Says submission format. And I'll read from the bottom of paragraph B on the first page. Furthermore, as much original research as necessary shall be conducted to develop the environmental impact statement. The inventory required by this section shall be accompanied by a log indicating the dates, times, weather conditions, and specific site locations of all onsite inspections. All environmental impact statements shall consist of written and graphic materials which clearly present the required information utilizing the the following format, and then it goes on. So as to the log indicating dates, times, weather conditions, specific site locations, and all of all onsite inspections, you didn't maintain that, correct?
No, we just provided the, the bracket of the dates during which the site investigations were performed.
On the next page of the environmental impact statement, you, there's an indication as the type of sand on this site. And it indicates that the sand is Evesboro sand. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is, does the Evesboro sand, uh, over the entirety of this site or only a portion of the site?
It's over the portion of the site that is being proposed to be developed. As noted, the wet, the soils within the wetlands that are not proposed to be developed are sure a different type, but again, we're describing the soils where the development is proposed.
Right, and Evesboro sand is particularly permeable, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's a rapid, allows for the rapid movement of water, or in this case, uh, waste, wastewater, treated wastewater through it, correct?
Typically, it's a well-drained, uh, Typically, it's a well-drained, uh, sand, loamy sand, yes.
And, uh, but it's available water capacity is low, correct?
Yes.
What does that mean?
Available water capacity is a water available for uptake by plants. If you're planting trees or shrubs.
Okay. And so it's a, it's a soil that will allow the wastewater to flow quickly toward the Dove Mill Branch. Is that correct? As opposed to other types of sands?
It's a well, it's a well-drained permeable sand, yes.
Now, the 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 stream in the back, the Dove Mill Branch, which eventually, as you indicated, goes into the Tom's River, that is a class one or a C one stream, correct?
Yes.
And how does one get designated as a class one or a C one stream?
That's designated by the State Department of Environmental Protection.
Okay. And C one streams are more protected, less protected than C two streams? And what what's the difference?
Category one stream is one that typically is, it it's the highest protected stream typically uh, described as such because they may be upstream of public water supplies or contain threatening or endangered species.
Okay. And is either of those things true here? Is this water upstream of a public water supply or are there endangered and threatened species?
No, but 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 the designation, when this, when the state designates a stream, they designate the entire stream. You know, in other words, the the Tom's River and all tributaries, or the Mc, North Branch of the Matitacan can all tributaries.
And this is a tributary of the Tom's River, and therefore it is a class one category stream, which makes it the most protected that the state of New Jersey can designate, correct?
That is correct. And and that is why we maintain a three hundred foot buffer so that no development is proposed within three hundred feet of the stream.
Well, the state wouldn't allow you to to to, uh, develop within three hundred feet of a class one stream, would they? That's required that you maintain maintain the buffer, correct?
You're, you're, you're you're only permitted to disturb within the three hundred foot buffer a very limited amount.
And in this case, you're not going to go into that three hundred foot buffer.
We we are permitted a disturbance of sixty nine hundred square feet. Any site with a category one buffer can disturb sixty nine hundred square feet. We are not proposing any disturbance.
And the buffer is from the midpoint of the stream, is that correct?
From the edge of the bank of the stream.
Okay. And then there's a hundred and fifty foot buffer from the edge of the wetlands. Is that true?
That's what we've included on the plans. That's correct.
And is that, is it the greater of the hundred and fifty or the three hundred, depending upon where that line goes?
That's correct.
In your report on on page four, it says, based on field observations, there are approximately thirty five wells currently located within five hundred feet of the project site. Um, and you indicate that, uh, typically residential wells are drilled into the Cohanty Aquifer at a depth of between eighty and one hundred and forty feet. Um, I will make a representation. My client will testify later that his well is thirty feet on the neighboring property. Does that have the potential to be impacted by the waste, the twenty four thousand six hundred gallons of wastewater that will be traveling every day to the Dove Mill Branch?
Uh, in my opinion, no, because your client's property is upstream of up gradient of the proposed, uh, site as well as the proposed septic disposal system. And I would maybe, uh, when discussing the well depth, the well regulations, uh, the state regulates all all wells, be it an irrigation well or domestic supply well. And those well regulations have been in effect for more than thirty years. Any well that's less than, I would, in my opinion, any well that's less than eighty feet deep is a well that preceded those regulations. Doesn't mean it's not important, doesn't need to mean it needs to be a concern, but, uh, uh, basically, it 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 precedes any of the, uh, well regulations that that have existed for more than thirty years.
On the next page, you have a statement that talks about the landscape project. That's a New Jersey D E P website project essentially, right? Where you can go on and print maps that show sensitive areas and what have you?
Yes.
Okay. And in this particular case, you, uh, you looked at that, and that's public. Anybody can do that, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And you looked, and there's actually five levels or ranks indicating conservation priority with regard to, uh, with regard to species, I guess, or habitat for species. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And just quickly tell us what those ranks are.
Right. Rank rank one would be, uh, basically an, uh, a developed or urban habitat having no habitat, and rank five would be a pristine uh, undeveloped area containing, uh, sightings, known sightings of threatened or endangered, uh, species.
Okay. And two, three, and four, do they have threatened or endangered species in them?
Not necessarily. Two and three, uh, three typically uh, contains what they call species of special concern, which are not regulated under any, uh, permitting program, but but species the state likes to keep, uh, keep track of for reasons I don't understand, but, uh.
And you found that this project was a three?
That's correct. The rear of the portion, the rear portion of the property, which is generally the area within the undisturbed repairing buffer and, um, wetland buffer is in rank three.
And you're not proposing to do anything in the three area, correct?
Just to, just to be clear, I mean, these are all considerations the D E P is going to be handling and rendering an opinion on. So when it comes down to species and upstreams and the sand, and then these are all considerations the D E P within their purview jurisdiction are going to be handling.
I I agree, uh, Mr. Shea, that they are considerations of the D E P, but because Jackson has gone to great lengths to pass their own environmental impact statement ordinance, and the ordinance requires that the applicant address threatened and endangered species, I think that there is concurrent jurisdiction, and this board ought to be very concerned about it.
I I understand that, and you know, they have to take into consideration that the health, safety, welfare, the community. Um, but this is, this is, some of these issues are outside jurisdictional, so I just wanted to make sure that we're, I understand you're laying the foundation. I I.
This this report was submitted directly in response to the requirement of your ordinance to provide environmental impact statements where you have more than how many square feet, twenty thousand? Mr. Borden?
Yes.
And how many square feet do you have here?
I don't know what this square footage, but it certainly exceeds twenty thousand.
By a lot. I I believe that was submitted to the, to the commission, correct?
The Environmental Commission gave a positive recommendation to the project, yes.
They had no concerns was their report, correct? So, but that assumes that the report is completely accurate, and I believe I've shown a couple of inaccuracies already. Yes, sir.
We have the chairman of the Environmental Commission.
I'm the environmental commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Borden knows that I am harder on him and I stand on his shoulders and I demand a lot from him. Okay? And he delivers.
Okay.
All right.
I have only a few more questions.
Where you're going with this, and I'll speak to you as a layman. Soils are soils. Okay. I hear it all the time. Well, the, you know, this report about soils, every report about soils. Soil has been in place for millions of years. Okay? That's a fact. The Treatment Works Facility has been done in Jackson forever. It's not the perfect optimum, you know, hooking into a pipe. So yes, as the commission looks at it, we say there is no concern because there is a solution for it. We'd all love to drive a Cadillac, but some of us have to drive a Chevy. Okay. So with that being said, let's, let's move on. Okay. You you've been up here for an hour picking on soil and this and that, and it's outside our jurisdiction. Every time I see these treat water, treat water plants, as a retired construction manager, I know what they are.
Okay.
They're a state problem. They're an E P A, uh, excuse me, a D E P problem. There's nothing we can do here until they fail or they hiccup, and then we can address it. And as the commissioner in town, I've done that with several businesses here. They put them on the record when they overflow a sidewalk or something like that, or they're not properly maintained. Okay? So let's move on.
Yeah, I'm just going to ask them a couple of questions about this area, and then I.
Sorry, I'm sorry, just Mr. Bresson, just.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, I I I kind of know where Mr. Reich is coming from. And at the beginning of this, with your, uh, with the sewer systems and stuff, and you make it seem like the township or the applicant can just move sewer lines. I think we need somebody in this room to explain what the two oh eight system is and how it gets arrived at. Do you know what the two oh eight is?
I'm not here to answer questions.
You're not here to answer questions. Okay, the two oh eight is the master plan of all your sewer lines put in by the D E P. When you do a master plan, you put them where you like them. The D E P decides. The township can't, the township M U A cannot. They got to go to the county, O C U A, and the county to go to the D E P. And the D E P regulates that. That's why that area is not in the sewer system. It's not by the applicant's choice, Mr. Ian's choice, Mr. Jennings' choice. That's the D E P made that. So you asked, did the D E P agree with that? Apparently, I did, because they created it. And I think you should study about the two oh eight and how it gets arrived at before you go countering it like you're you're just beating something apart. But that's how the system works. It goes along with your master plan. I can tell you when that master plan, the township had much more in the two oh eight they wanted. And then about the third week before it was over, the D E P erased it and took it out. It's their privilege to do that. We can't control that.
Thank you for that information. Uh, Mr. Borden, just a couple of more questions on the endangered and threatened species. If this property was a rank four, would that make a difference? You would indicate it's a rank three.
No.
It would not make a difference.
No.
Why not?
Because those, that would be in the portion of the site that we're not developing.
Okay.
Just to be just to be clear, the planning board, their jurisdiction has to do with the site plan. I I understand that you're talking about local ordinance that Jackson has, but the board does not have the authority of of rejecting an application based upon the disturbance of an animal. Uh, that is firmly in the D E P as much as many of these issues are, uh, you know, whether fortunately, unfortunately, however you view it. Um, but as as to that issue that that is firmly outside jurisdiction.
I I have an op, I have a right, I believe, on behalf of the next door neighbor who owns nine point seven acres and then also has a house adjacent to that to check into, uh, the report that they're relying upon based upon his testimony, and they've they put it in issue, so I'm entitled to cross-examine on it.
Please correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the right to discuss these issues was by the Environmental Commission meeting, which was held on a few months ago.
It was held several months ago, and I was having a conversation with my colleagues. Your first notice that this was going to become a project comes to me at the Environmental Commission in the form of a an L O Y. It's the first thing that happens. What do you have? Where is it? Where, what, what does the applicant, Mr. Borden, at all see as the buffers? That happens months early. Everybody looks at that letter and they're like, no, it doesn't apply to me, throws it out. That's your first signal for, excuse me, folks, I think I'm going to have a project. Okay. Second, the Environmental Commission is an advisory commission has no enforcement whatsoever. I have the privilege of going into code enforcement and a few other things and asking, you know, that things get done or reinforcing it. But it's an advisory. And my colleagues up here know that when there's something like egregious, you know, bald eagles, you know, you know, sitting out on on the front lawn, that we're going to say something about it. Okay, but it's advisory. And again, I I will tell you, I'm pretty hard on Mr. Borden in most circumstances, and he delivers. And if it doesn't show up in the package the first time, I get it the next month because he knows that if I don't get it in thirty days, I'll pull that package. Okay. So there's no fooling around here. It 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 circles back to to advising you that a lot of this is well above our shoulders at the state. Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman. Just have a brief question on that Southland Village. How many mobile homes are there? You're referencing it as a double a capacity, the Ghippi permit.
I I can't tell you how many homes it is, Mr. Wall, uh, but I can tell you that their flow, because the flow is in the state records, and I read them today, their permitted flow is forty five thousand gallons per day.
They're per, well, there are two hundred and fifty homes there, I believe.
Okay.
Two fifty.
So you're trying to trap me?
We all trap ourselves for time, time, don't we? So two hundred and fifty homes. How many people live in the average mobile home?
Usually two is the average.
So about five hundred residents?
Yeah.
I'm just comparing and contrasting five hundred residents, just so we're we're talking about the same set of facts, um, contrasted with the number of students.
I understand.
Um, uh, whether it's one gender or both genders, if that has any traction on effluent or the type of effluent. Um, so just so we're talking about the same, we're being honest with ourselves, both from all sides. And so with the permit, is that um, the actual flows reported or the flows that they're authorized to?
That's the flows they're authorized to, uh.
Okay. So if you're authorized for a hundred, uh, ten million gallons a year, and you have three people living in one house, you follow, what I'm trying to, is there a way to correlate the the authorization instead of giving a perception that it's the the actual flow? So the actual, the the approvals for forty thousand, I don't know what the regs were down there, for five hundred residents. And because you'd be led to believe that they have forty thousand flow per day?
Forty five thousand gallons per day. That's correct.
From five hundred proximate people.
Okay.
I just wonder, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying there's forty five thousand gallons per day. I'm not estimating the number of people.
Forty five thousand approved by the state and no, we have no knowledge of the actual flow. It's just a rule. It's like the credit line, where they use the dollar or the whole line.
Well.
But I'm just trying to make it so we understand what we're talking about, that facts are clear.
The approved, the approved flow is normally, uh, calculated the same way that we've calculated the estimated average daily flow for this site, which is the state has formulas that you have to use. It is the number of units that you have, be it a single family house or a square foot of commercial space or a number of students multiplied times the unit factor of that particular use.
And just last question I have.
Uh, in your case, if if it's two hundred and fifty units, I did the math, that would be about a hundred and eighty gallons per day, which which it it sounds like a fair number for, uh, those who are, I believe, manufactured homes, so. Uh, but I would, I would also present the math a different way, or if if just to put it in the category of single family homes, our twenty two thousand six hundred gallons per day is equivalent to only twenty eight five bedroom houses. Twenty eight five bedroom houses. You've just heard my E I S talk about how there's thirty five within five hundred feet.
Last question I have, the formula has been the same for South Winds, but I don't know how far back that goes, or the formula has changed over time for the Nijipi's permit, if you're aware. Or it's the same formula, how they.
They, the the Ghippi's permit is good, I believe, for for five years, I believe, so that gets reauthorized every five years. And and obviously, if there's been any change in regulations with unit flows or that would be included in any updated permit.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to mark an exhibit, and then I'll finish up my questioning with this exhibit. I had a lot more questions, but I will, in the interest of concluding things more quickly. If I could have this marked.
Who prepared the exhibit?
It's from the new, New Jersey Geo website landscape, the public, uh, the public, uh, website that Mr. Borden was testifying about.
Thank you. What exhibit number are we up to for this application?
Well, this will be.
It'll be an objector exhibit, oh, one. So I'm going to show you what's been marked oh, one, uh, and you can tell us if you can identify it.
Mr. Mitchell Lee, don't have copies for the board, do you?
I didn't bring my glasses.
Thank you.
Mr. Borden, can you identify that? I'm sorry about that. I will represent that. I printed it off the site.
I I recognize it.
From the landscape project, correct? And it shows these properties. It shows lot six fifteen six oh one, lot two fifteen six oh one, and the other lot, which is partially obscured by the legend. which talks about species-based habitat. You see that?
I don't see the legend.
Okay, I'll represent that it says rank four for the lighter green area, which would encompass various portions of the lots in question, including the portions that are going to be developed. Can you see that? I'll give you a, yeah.
Yes.
All right. And I'll, and maybe I printed the wrong thing, but that's from the landscape website, is you recognize it, correct?
Uh, yes.
And that shows a rank four, which is different than what your report says is rank three, right?
Uh, yes.
And it also shows areas of the site that are going to be developed where it's rank four, meaning that there's barred owl breeding sighting, timber rattler snake occupied habitat, correct? It shows that.
Uh, yes.
Do you have any reason to believe that the New Jersey landscape, new website is wrong?
No.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for the board?
Ms. Chairman? Just, just a couple. Mr. Borden, you indicated you needed three permits. One was the Nijhippi's, a Treatment Works approval, and what was the other one?
The WQMP amendment.
That's not the
WQMP amendment?
That's not the 208 plan.
That is the 208.
That is the 208.
As Mr. Bressi, he shows his, his knowledge. The WQMP, which is Water Quality Management Plan, is Section 208 of the statute. So when Mr., we speak the same language. We've lived these, these things over the years. When he describes a 208 plan, that is the Water Quality Management Plan.
So this amendment will put you in the 208 plan?
It, it, no, it's a separate category for a discharge. There's, there's, there's three categories in the Water Quality Management Plan or the 208 plan. One is in a sewer service area. Two is outside a sewer service area. And then three is actual facility discharging more than 2,000 gallons per day. That's why that, that Exhibit 820, every single one of those 27 Nijhippi's certifications in this township has its own WQMP amendment identifying them as a groundwater discharge. So it's a project-specific amendment to allow the discharge to groundwater.
Thank you. And the systems that we're proposing, maintenance for them? Is the, you know, treatment that's proposed?
It's, it's intended to be not require maintenance because it is a sand filter that, that just basically is meant to serve as a breeding ground and for bacteria to, to eat the nitrates. But there certainly is maintenance provided by the manufacturer. Typically, the manufacturer provides a maintenance program when they sell the system, which requires periodic inspections, and there's controls in the small building or the controls. And, and, and most importantly of all of that is that as part of the Nijhippi's permit, most land use permits that we receive, once you receive the permit, you build it and, and, and that's all there is, be it a wetland permit or a sewer permit. The Nijhippi's permits are unique because there comes with it a continuing perpetual forever monitoring and modeling. In other words, there's quarterly groundwater monitoring or discharge monitoring to ensure, they don't take our word for it. There is every quarter, there is a sample taken of the waste to ensure that it stays below the 2 par per million.
And whether it's the manufacturer of the device or the applicant, those, those requirements will be met?
Typically, there's a licensed operator required certified by the DEP that would, that would perform those tests and, and provide those quarterly reports. There's quarterly reports required to the DEP as a condition of any permit.
And the last question, we're going to bring public water to, to the site?
Yes.
Will that public water be available to residents in the area?
I believe the water is already, I think Bill testified, it's already in the road, I thought. I, I'm, Bill had testified to that. But the answer is yes, it would be available to anybody else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your next witness? You'll have your chance. He's, he's still here, but when Public Comic comes, he'll be here.
Okay, this time I'd like to call up John Ray, our traffic engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear a firm testimony, information, questions, or comments. You will present before the board. It's the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and your credentials, please.
John Ray, R-E-A, Principal with McDonough and Ray Associates, 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquan, New Jersey. Traffic engineers. And with respect to my personal background, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been a licensed professional engineer for over 40 years. I have a total of 48 years experience in the traffic engineering field. Last 38 years of which have been in the state of New Jersey doing consulting work. An undergraduate degree in civil engineering from NJIT and a master's degree in transportation engineering from NYU. And I've been before this board on many occasions to provide traffic testimony.
Thank you. We accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, if you could, just for the record, you've had an opportunity to visit the site and the area around the site?
On numerous occasions, yes.
And when you visited the site, did you conduct any study or research to determine the impact of the school campus on the adjacent roadway network?
We did.
And if you could discuss your findings set forth in the traffic impact analysis dated October 3, 2022?
Sure, and that is the date of the published traffic impact analysis. And I'll just go through some of the things that went into the traffic study and what the conclusions were. First of all, let me say, just to start off, at, at the very beginning of my testimony, we are proposing a traffic signal at the entrance and exit to and from the school campus, the East Veterans Highway. That's been discussed with Ocean County. They understand that the signal is warranted. We're going to provide improvements at our main access drive. We're going to provide a left turn lane for traffic turning left into the main driveway. We're going to provide a deceleration lane for traffic decelerating and making a right turn into the campus driveway. And we are going to provide for a traffic signal. We have run the numbers and a peak hour traffic signal warrant is met. So the main access to East Veterans Highway will be signaledized. I thought it was just important to get those facts out there right away. So with respect to the traffic study, we looked at the statement of operations for the the two girls' high schools, each of which will contain 500 students. And the elementary school, we looked at the hours of the operation of those schools. And from the hours of operation, we concluded that the critical peak hours for analysis in the traffic study were eight to nine AM in the morning. That's when all of the schools would be receiving students within that one hour timeframe. And in the afternoon, the critical peak hour would be four to 5 PM. That's when the girls' high school would be discharging traffic, and also there would be some traffic discharged from the elementary school. Those would be the two critical peak hours, eight to nine in the morning, four to five in the afternoon. With respect to the traffic counts that we conducted, we did two different kinds of traffic counts. We conducted manual turning movement counts at the two traffic signals on either side of the property. To the west, that would be the signal at Cedar Swamp Road, East Veterans Highway and Bennett's Mills Road. And to the east, it would be the signal at Grand Boulevard Butterfly Road. Those counts were done on June 7 and June 9, 2022, when schools were open. There were no detours or unusual events that would affect peak hour traffic flow at those locations. So two different days, peak hour traffic counts were conducted at both of those signaledized intersections. In addition to the manual turning movement counts, we put a traffic counter, a hose down across East Veterans Highway, and we counted traffic for a whole week, again, again in June of 2022, just to confirm the accuracy of the manual turning movement counts and the fact that we had the right peak hours to, to analyze. And I can tell you that the counts from the automatic traffic recorder and the manual counts that we did were consistent. They were within 5% of each other. So I'm confident we have the right traffic counts to project, to do the traffic, uh, traffic impact analysis. We looked at the statement of operations and understood that the majority of the students to the site are going to be bussed. There's going to be a small percentage, we anticipate after speaking to the applicant, a small percentage of the students that will arrive in a personal or private automobile from a parent or a family member, maybe because they missed the bus or they have to get out of school early for an appointment of one type or another. That percentage is going to be somewhere between 5 and 10% as we understand it. I think in our traffic impact study, we assumed 7% of the students would arrive and depart via personal automobile. We took those numbers. We projected traffic volumes for those critical eight to nine and four to five peak hours, and I can give you some numbers as far as what we're projecting. We are, for the combined school campus for all three schools for the morning peak hour, we're projecting 367 entry movements, 207 exit movements for a total of 574 driveway movements. For the afternoon peak hour between four and five, we're projecting 189 inbound movements, 294 outbound movements for a total of 483 movements. And again, the overwhelming majority of that traffic will use the traffic signal on East Veterans Highway. There is a secondary access that we've proposed, and I see Anthony's put up the site plan, which will be a right in, right out only access, which will be a little bit further to the east from the primary signaledized access. So there will be two ways into and out of the campus, but we anticipate that the majority of the traffic will be focused at the traffic signal at the main driveway to the campus. We projected traffic volumes to a design year of 2032. That's in accordance with the Ocean County Planning Board Protocol. They want you to take a look at a 10-year horizon for any land development project in Ocean County. And in order to project 2032 traffic volumes, we included background traffic growth from the NJDOT's background traffic growth rate tables for Ocean County. We also included site-specific traffic from two projects that have been approved, that my firm did the traffic study for. One of them is the PORT, and that's spelled P-O-R-T, CONE, C-O-H-N, mixed use project, which is right on the other side of East Veterans Highway, opposite the municipal building and the Switlick School. That's going to be approximately, if I'm not mistaken, 180 or 190 residential units and some retail space. That traffic was included in the analysis as well as the traffic from the Leesville School Campus, just north of the Quick Check on Leesville Road, which has also been approved. All of that traffic's been included in the future traffic volume projections. After projecting all of that traffic to a design year of 2032, we took a look at levels of service for the signaledized intersection that we're proposing on East Veterans Highway and for the two adjacent off-site signaledized intersections that I mentioned where we did the traffic counts. And for the members of the public who may not understand what levels of service are, it's a measure of how traffic engineers qualify how well an intersection is operating. Levels of service relate to the delay that motorists experience going through an intersection. Levels of service range from A, which is the highest or best attainable level of service, to F, which is the lowest. Generally speaking, level of service E and above is considered to be acceptable. Once you get to a level of service F condition, you have to look at mitigation in terms of a traffic signal widening an intersection. Could be any different kind of mitigation. To give you an example, if we didn't have a signaledized intersection, we'd have a level of service F. It was a stop, if it was a stop control going out onto the Veterans Highway. So we're proposing a traffic signal. We will meet peak hour traffic signal warrants. With the traffic signal at the main access to the campus and with the widening of the intersection to provide for the left turn lane and the right turn deceleration lane, we are going to have a level of service B condition for both the morning and afternoon peak hours with the signal and with those improvements. At the right in, right out driveway, which is just to the east of the main access, that's going to be just for right turn movements exiting onto East Veterans Highway only. We're going to have a level of service C during the AM peak hour and level of service B for the PM peak hour. Going back to the signal at Cedar Swamp Road, East Veterans Highway and Bennett's Mills Road, that intersection will operate at level of service C for the 2032 design year with our traffic and the other traffic from the projects I mentioned before. That's going to operate at a C level of service for the morning and afternoon peak hours. And I would also point that to the board, that that takes into consideration the fact that Ocean County has an improvement plan for that intersection. There's going, going to be some widening and some restriping of the intersection, which I know the county is very slow on doing things sometimes, but it's assumed to be in place for the 2032 design year. I think we can confidently say that will happen. It's almost 10 years in the future. And they do have an improvement plan for that intersection. Going back to the east at the signal at Butterfly Road and Grand Boulevard, that intersection will operate at level of service B for the AM peak street hour and level of service C for the PM peak street hour for the 2032 build condition. We also looked at the site plan and the parking. And there was a discussion at the last meeting regarding some bank parking, which we are proposing, which would be in that infield area. I'm indicating right in the area where I'm circling right there in the middle of the campus. We would like to land back those parking spaces. We do not believe we will need them. I know there was some discussion at the, at the last hearing regarding whether we should build those spaces right up front or not. It is my opinion, we should wait. We should see if we need those spaces. I'm pretty confident we won't need them, but they can be built if they are required. And in my opinion, there's no need to pave that area and have that runoff and, you know, the environmental consequences from the runoff. And quite frankly, just, you know, it would be nicer to have a nice green area in the middle of the campus if we don't need those parking spaces. With the bank parking, we do meet the ordinance requirement for the township, and I, I, I know it's in one of the, your experts' reports, but we, we're not deficient on parking. With the land bank parking, we meet and slightly exceed the township's ordinance requirements. So we do meet that requirement. The plan itself has been properly designed with respect to the circulation system, the stacking for the school buses for the three schools. Parking areas have been provided proximate to each one of the school buildings. Drop-off areas for parents have been provided. And on balance, this is a very properly prepared site plan as I see it. We have a lot of property to work with. It has allowed us to prepare what I believe is a very safe and efficient plan for internal and external traffic circulation. And that basically summarizes it.
The only question I would ask with respect to the onsite circulation is with respect to the emergency vehicles, we've provided adequate onsite circulation?
We have, and if I'm not mistaken, I think Mr. Stevens testified to this at the last meeting. I think the emergency services people have looked at this and have signed off on it. If I'm wrong, he can correct me, but I, I believe that's happened.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. That's all the direct testimony I have from Mr. Ray.
Thank you. Before we get to Mr. Schliemann, our professional, Mr. Peters would like to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Ray. Our report dated January 30, 2023 had a comment that I thought you and I talked about at the last hearing about one of the charts on page five needing to be revised.
Yes, I agree with you.
Will that have a significant impact on the results you've testified to this evening?
It will not. We, we, we have to double the amount of buses that are going to be generated from the high school. The two high schools in the morning, 22 in and 22 out, instead of 11 in and 11 out, and we will do that. We can revise the traffic study. But given that level of service B condition that we're projecting for the main signaledized intersection, I do not believe it'll have a significant impact.
Thank you. Since you did the testimony, these are both questions for you and I think Ms. Jennings. You've indicated that a traffic light's going to be required. So my question simply is, when's it going to get built? Does it get built with the first unit, the first building? Is, is the applicant somehow going to suggest that we don't need it until we get to the second or third building? second or third building? I think it needs to be clear for the, for the board and the public and the record, that while we understand that a traffic light is necessary based upon full build out of the site, and you may not know the answer, which is why I'm, you gave the testimony, so I'm staring at Mrs., Ms. Jennings as well, when's a traffic light going to get built?
I'll try to answer that. I think that's really going to be up to the county, which has jurisdiction over the intersection and the signal, but I certainly understand the, the question. I have not discussed this with my client, and I think that's something that we do have to make a determination on, but whatever we decide, it will have to be approved by the county, which, which will have jurisdiction over the signal.
This is a really crystal ball thing for you to try to figure when a county's going to do something, you understand that. Is there any way the applicant would stipulate that until that light's functional, that it wouldn't be in full operation? Because in all honesty, if that light's there, you're back to your F number.
Understood.
So you're back to your F number, you failed for once. Usually your D is passed, you understand that, but the F is failed.
Correct.
So if you don't have a light, you're back to the F situation. So how could you operate safely then? Shouldn't there be a stipulation that some way gauges when you can start functioning there fully until the light goes in?
I think that's a fair question, and it's an analysis that hasn't been done yet as far as what level of development can occur without that level of service F condition happening. And I, I welcome participation from the township. When we go to the county and we sit down and discuss this, we welcome the participation of Mr. Clea or Mr. Peters in those discussions.
I appreciate that.
To make, to make sure that the township's interests are taken care of.
Enough years here, um, and I never hear you say F, that you're in that, that dangerous category where you have to make a mediation. And this term, without the light, you had to go to an F.
Correct.
So I feel if you don't have a light, you must make a mediation.
Understood.
Thank you.
Do you have any clarity at what point is it, if one building's built, you're going to be at a F? If two buildings are built, you'll be at a, you know, what point?
Okay, I, I do not have that answer right now, to be honest with you. My client has just advised me, he's looking to install the signal at fifty percent occupancy, but I have to tell him, I'd have to run those numbers to see if we can avoid level of service F at that level. I don't know what the answer is yet.
And, and quite honestly, the, the concern here is what the period of time to determine if there's a problem out at the site. You can't show up the next day and put a piece of asphalt in the ground. Traffic light takes period of time to approve, install, turn operational. So if we have a problem, fifty percent of the site is one and a half buildings, respectfully. So I, I, I think we need to have a little more clarity before we get to a final decision. And it doesn't have to be tonight, but I think you need to understand that this isn't, we'll put another dumpster out on the site, or put another, um, another traffic, uh, another light in the parking lot because it's too dark. To build a traffic light doesn't happen in a, in a day or a week. So I, I, I think we probably need to discuss that, probably both sides need to discuss that a little better, so that if the board acts in the affirmative, we can craft something in a resolution, it would be satisfactory to both parties.
Mr. Shea, do you have any input on that?
Um, so when it comes down to a county.
Can I just follow up on Ernie's? Uh, I, I think one of the things that the county will require, even if we don't put the signal in right up front, which that may very well turn out to be the case, the roadway improvements that I discussed, the left turn lane, the right turn deceleration lane, the widening, that's all going to have to take place up front before we can operate. That's going to have to take place. And one of the things we can do is in anticipation of installing a traffic signal, when the roadway widening and the intersection improvements are done, we can put the conduit in, we can put the foundation, you know, lay out the foundations, the junction boxes, we can pre-design it for the traffic signal, if you will, so that what Mr. Peters was talking about before, when the time comes to install the signal, we don't have to rip the road up, the conduit's there, the junction boxes are there, uh, the signal can be installed rather quickly then. That's typically done.
But the res, the residents who live in the vicinity or the people who travel through the vicinity, they want to ensure that their street corner won't be operating at a level F.
Understood.
So.
I, I understand.
The trust.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I understand it's a totally legitimate question, one that we, like I said, we welcome the township's participation when we speak to the county, and we'll work that out with you guys.
Mr. Shea, do you have any comments now?
So this is a unique situation because half is, half is county, half is uh, local roads. So uh, this may be one of the conversation that Ms. Jennings, you may want to have with your client as to uh, any condition of approval that they'd be willing to uh, put onto the record, um, as, as to this issue, so maybe some clarity before we uh, move on from the traffic issue.
Understood.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I just have one additional question for Mr. Ray, and then I'll be finished. That's okay?
Sure.
Um, we talked about land banking some of the parking spaces, um, and while probably everyone in the room has um, seen the construction of a sea of asphalt because of parking standards, and one that comes to mind is ShopRite on County Line Road. Um, we, we can't ever fill the parking spaces up. Um, while it is good that the municipality has design standards and the applicant indicates that they can comply with those standards, to the extent we can limit the amount of pavement that's placed on a site, I think that's quite frankly the environmental correct thing to do. However, once again, like the traffic light, I think there needs to be some procedure in place to say when they need to be done. We would think that the owner would say, hey, listen, if, if for some reason I have more, more students or more teachers or whatever, I'll build more parking spaces. That's great, we can't see the future, see who's going to own each of these buildings in the future. So I think there needs to be something, should the board get to the point of drafting an affirmative resolution, puts forth how the town can act if in fact we find that there needs to be additional parking spaces, should the board find the request for land banking appropriate.
So if I can respond, I think the last time we indicated that in the beginning of every school year, the zoning officer or some other designated township employee would come out and check. Um, the number of students can't change because the number of students impacts the parking, and so we're going to be approved for a certain amount of students in the schools because that relates directly to the parking. So there's a increase in the number of students, they'd have to come back in here for some type of an amended application, that's for sure.
And I just checked the plans, the number of land bank parking spaces we're talking about are a hundred and thirty-six spaces in that infield area in the central part of the campus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have from Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
One of my concerns is uh, parking, stopping and standing. I know it's a county, you know, it's a dual-issue road, but I'd like to see some no-stopping, no-standing signs both sides of the road, because I have a lack of faith in the system of busing and mothers. Uh, so I would like to see uh, no-stopping, no-standing signs both sides of the road um, on all fronting property.
Yes, Dr. Campbell, I don't think the applicant would have a, an issue with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Fleming?
Question for you. How are you going to control on your second uh, entrance road, the right-in, right-out? Is it going to be with concrete, or it's good, it doesn't show anything on the plan?
Uh, I.
If it's going to be signage, how do you stop somebody?
Well, it's going to be, um, it's going to have to be channelized to, to restrict the left turn movements.
Okay. Um, second question, is this a phased project, or is it being built all at once?
I don't have the answer to that. I don't know if Mr. Stevens testified, is it, if it's going to be phased or built all at once.
The reason I'm asking is if he wants to institute a traffic light at fifty percent, how do we know what's going to happen if it's a phased project?
I, I understand, I don't know if the pro, yeah.
It's going to take years, it could be years before the traffic light put in, so it's not a good concept.
I think we're going to have to get back to you with, with the answer.
I believe the applicant testified by the last meeting that it was not going to be a phased project.
Okay. So the traffic light that is proposed, is there going to be a left turn light coming into the main entrance?
In all likelihood, the county will require that, yes.
Okay.
And as a matter of fact, I can just say, yeah, it's, there'll be a left turn error.
How are you handling the residence driveway directly across from the entrance?
Something we're going to have to work at with the county. Um, typically what's done in a situation like this, because we're going to have transitions for the left turn lanes and what have you, the county may be amenable to a break in the striping on Veterans Highway that's opposite the driveways, that can be done. Uh, so we'd have to work that out with the county.
Maybe want to include a resident in that.
Excuse me?
Maybe want to include a resident in that.
Sure.
And on the green banking, um, the only schools of this nature that we have to go by are in our neighboring town, and they are notoriously under utilized, underparked. They don't have enough parking for what we say. I'm going to have to disagree with you on the need or not need for the, those.
Yeah. Mr. Fleming, I understand, and my firm has done a lot of this work in Lakewood as well, too. We have a different situation here in Jackson, we have a lot of property here, a lot of those sites in Lakewood are undersized, and that's why we have the issue that we do there. Uh, we won't have that problem here.
Not if you put them parking spot in. Thank you.
Well, again, we were leaving that up to the board, so whatever the majority decides on that would be the answer.
Just to be clear, uh, Ms. Jennings, um, I believe last time a condition of approval was that uh, the students wouldn't be parking there. Uh, I believe that that was, it was just the busing, the high school students wouldn't be.
It's understanding, Mr. Shea, that they, they won't be driving, that the high school kids and the elementary school kids certainly won't be driving, so.
I mean, I hope.
Students will not be driving.
But that age.
Right, unlike a public school where the kids get a driver's license and their parents buy them a car and they can park on the, the kids here, it's a private school, they are not allowed to drive to school.
If we put that as a conditional approval, that maybe, may alleviate some of the concerns.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's, it's part of the school. And I asked the rabbi directly, what if somebody misses the bus and shows up anyway in a car? He said they'll be turned away and they'll be going to a different school.
Okay, Mr. Bressi?
Yes, Mr. Ray, I have a question. You made reference to another town having a problem with the parking and stuff, and my question to you, because you said you worked on some of them, did they meet RSIS requirements in that town or not? I understand a lot of it was just, here's what you need and that's it, it wasn't RSIS standards method to begin with, is that correct?
Mr. Bressi, I've known you for a long time. RSIS relates to residential site improvement standards, it doesn't relate to these school facilities.
They just put in what they wanted to, there was no regulation.
Oh, I can't say that, there were, uh, Lakewood has ordinance requirements like Jackson does, they may not be as strict as Jackson, and some sites may have gotten variances.
Mr. Herring, did you, did you like to say anything? Oh, you do. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Schalini?
Thank you. Mr. Ray, a few questions. Did, appreciate that there's going to be a traffic control device out there, a light, correct?
Yes.
Um, is that in a plan that has actually been submitted? I did not see it, it may have been submitted.
Uh, I got to check with Mr. Stevens. I believe the county had asked him for some details, and we provided those details. The county may have seen it, I'm not sure if the township has. But we, we have, we have done a preliminary design for the widening of the intersection uh, to accommodate the signal.
All right, but as, to the best of your knowledge, that has not yet been submitted to this board.
To the best of mine, I didn't submit it, I don't know if Mr. Stevens' firm did.
And it, in a normal case where that is considered from the outset, I know this was kind of brought in later, that would normally be submitted to the board in the beginning, correct? So they can see it.
Not necessarily. The county had requested it, so we responded to the county request.
the chip, trip generation that you show on table one, page five, I believe, your report, you had indicated that uh, some things had to be changed. Is it just the two numbers in the AM peak hours for buses that have to be changed for the girls' high school?
No, it's the parents, too. Parents have to be increased from thirty-five to seventy.
Okay, and that's in both columns, in and out?
Correct.
And any other changes to table five, or is that it?
Uh, that would be it, and then we got to re-tabulate the totals.
And you haven't done that yet?
No.
With regard to this table of trip generation, what did, where did you get the information? I mean, how did you determine how many trips there were going to be in and out of the site, whether it's to the, to the elementary school, the high schools, whether it's buses, whether it's parents? How did you determine that?
From the statement of operations that the client provided to me.
And uh, is that statement of operations the same statement operations that they've placed on file with the board?
Uh, it should be.
You don't know?
It should be.
And um, so how many students on each bus? You have thirty buses going in and out, let's just look at the elementary school in the morning. Thirty buses going in and out in the morning, correct? And then uh, twenty-two in and out in the afternoon, is that correct?
Correct.
How did you determine how many buses? In other words, what information did the applicant give you to make that determination?
Uh, if I'm not mistaken, uh, we assume the capacity of the school bus would be about fifty students, but we assumed forty-five on a bus, if I'm not mistaken.
And if those assumptions turned out to be wrong, or the information given to you by the applicant turns out to be wrong, then that would impact the conclusions in your report, I assume.
No. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be off by that much, that would impact those good levels of service at the signalized intersection. We've got a long way to go from B to F. We're going to be fine.
So how many trips would need to make it back to an F even with the?
More, more than I could calculate.
More than you could calculate. Do, do you rely upon any uh, treatises or professional information? Uh, isn't there an Institute of Transportation Engineers?
Yes.
Something like that?
Yes.
And do you rely upon the information?
We usually, we usually do, but one of the things the IT always says is that if you have detailed information from the applicant or from the developer, uh, that you should use that information instead of their generic numbers.
Okay, and did you, did you do anything to verify that the information from the, from the developer was accurate?
Uh, I can only tell you that I, I took his statement of operations to be accurate based on work that we've done in Lakewood for other, and, and in Jackson for other schools of this nature, and uh, I found it to be believable, and I believe accurate, so we used it.
So you, you used the information that the applicant provided to you about trip generation based on his experience in Lakewood?
No, not based on his experience in Lakewood, based upon the statement of operations he provided to me for the school campus here in Jackson.
Is that part of your report, that statement operations?
It has been submitted, I think PDS submitted it. Um, I don't know if it's been slightly modified from the one that I looked at, that's why I answered the question the way I did, but I believe it has been.
But it's not in your report, correct?
No, no. But I did give you a summary of what was in the statement of operations, basically on page, pages three and four in my report, that basically summarizes it.
Now, the um, is, is there a reason that the number of children, let's say for an elementary school that the ITE manual would, would say would, would, uh, I'm sorry, is there a reason that the, that the number of trips that would, that the ITE would say would be appropriate or would occur where you had thirteen-hundred-and-fifty elementary school students, that that would be uh, more than twice or twice as much as what you would have in this situation?
Yes.
And what is that reason?
It assumes that in, in those cases, private schools, that there's a lot of parent drop-off and pickup, much more than we anticipate here with the busing that we're expecting.
Okay, so, all right, so you're referring.
And I can vouch for that being accurate, having done traffic studies for public schools.
So which, which is, i- if you were to look at the ITE uh, manual, which one would you look at, private schools or, or public?
I wouldn't look at the ITE, because one of the things the ITE says is that if you have specific knowledge of what is being proposed by an applicant or a developer, you use that data rather than the generic ITE rates. There's no reason to use it in this case.
I know you said that the counts were done in June, the automatic, automated accounts, were they also done June seventh or that week?
No, they were done later in June, the twenty-second through the twenty-ninth.
And that would be after the schools were out, correct?
Correct.
So there'd be less traffic on the roads when they were done.
The ATR counts were pretty consistent, but the manual turning movement counts we did on the seventh and the ninth were slightly higher, so they were used for the report.
Um, are there requirements? Are there requirements, ASHTO, you know what ASHTO is, right? What is ASHTO for the board?
The American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials.
Right, and do they have requirements for site distances?
At unsignalized intersections, yes, and, and to a certain extent for signalized intersections as well. But, but it's a little bit of a different situation.
I assume that this, this traffic device will meet the ASHTO standard?
Yes.
And you'll stipulate to that?
Yes.
Okay, and the, 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 the northern driveway, uh, I should, yeah.
East, I guess it's easterly, if I'm not mistaken, yeah.
Yeah, I guess it's.
If you could just take a pointer and show.
The right in, right out.
Got it. Uh, the, that driveway is, uh, is not signalized.
Correct.
That's just a right in, right out.
Correct.
Okay.
And we will have to meet ASHTO site distance requirements for that movement as well, too.
Now, with regard to the road widening, is any road widening going to occur in order to accommodate the improvements on, on east Veterans Highway that would require the taking of neighboring lands?
It does not appear so. Most of the widening will be done on our side of the road and on the other side of the road within the existing right of way.
So no condemnation contemplated?
Not that I can see, nope.
Um, are, in your plan, are driveway dimensions such as width, radii, curb opening, are they indicated?
It's not my plan. It's Mr. Stevens' plan, and he has indicated, you know, those dimensions.
All right.
And, and as I indicated, the emergency services people, as I understand it, have signed off on it.
You know, other than the driveway across the street from the site, if there's any other neighboring driveways that might be impacted by the proposed, uh, plan?
I didn't look at it in that detail. Again, if the residents want to, um, you know, contact the county and see what the final outcome of the county, you know, review of our plans, they're welcome to do so.
Would you be open to the residents contacting you?
Sure.
Left turn, there was a discussion about a left turn into the site and there'll be a signalized left turn, correct?
Yes.
Will there be a special kind of a storage lane for that? Or is that, there will be.
The left turn lane. Yes, sir.
I know that in that area, uh, the roadway is fifty miles an hour and striped for passing. I assume that will change with an intersect, with a traffic light. Can you tell us how far that will change?
You, you've assumed correct. Again, that's up to the county. Certainly, it will extend for a couple hundred feet in either direction from the signal as we need to provide tapers to provide for the left turn lane, the D cell lane, things of that nature. So it will extend for a couple, at least five, six, seven hundred feet either side of the signal, if not a little bit more.
And the, will it be marked as a school zone with, um, you know, modified speed limits?
It can be.
Is there any objection to that? It should be, correct?
No objection from the applicant's point of view.
Okay, would you make that request with the county?
Sure.
Um, I know there's sidewalks, uh, and, uh, let me, let me go to a different area. There's not gonna be any pickup or drop-off on the county road, correct?
Absolutely not. Uh, Dr. Campbell had mentioned, we, we agree to put no stopping, no standing restrictions up along the roadway.
And there's no sidewalks, it appears, along the west driveway, is that correct?
Along the west driveway.
I believe it's.
That would be the main access into the, I, I.
I think it's the other access. Are there any sidewalks along that?
I, I, I don't know. Probably Mr. Stevens is better equipped to answer that.
And in terms of interior circulation, if someone parks in handicap parking, do they have to cross the bus lanes to get to any of the buildings?
Yes.
Okay, is there a way to fix that? Will you recommend that?
We could provide crosswalks, um, from the handicap parking spaces to the buildings and we, this is why we have, you know, public hearings and site plan, plan applications are looked at by the board and, and you. And we can provide crosswalks and perhaps raised crosswalks that would slow traffic down, you know, to get the handicap spots over to the main part of the building. We can do that.
Okay, thank you. And the other crosswalks, I guess anybody parking in the general parking areas are also gonna have to cross the bus lanes in some sections of the site to get to the buildings.
They can use the same crosswalks that will provide for the handicap spaces.
So the the peak times for the morning trips and the afternoon trips, they pretty much coincide and overlap with commuter peak times, do they not?
Yes.
What's, I mean, what's to prevent in those circumstances where you have peak traffic to prevent it from backing up significantly on Route 528?
Not sure I understand the question. The analysis shows that that won't happen. It will have a B level of service at the signal.
So you don't think that's gonna happen?
I do not.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna take a five-minute break and we're going to, uh, hear the last witness, I believe, one more witness.
Yeah, we have the architect.
Perfect. We're gonna hear the architect after the five-minute break. Thank you. Okay, next witness?
Thank you. Um, just wanted to address very quickly, we had a little bit of a conversation during the break regarding the traffic signal. And what the applicant would be willing to do as a condition if the board were to so grant an approval would be that the trap, that no students would be in any of the buildings until the traffic signal was installed. We'd be able to start construction, but no CO would be issued until that traffic signal is in.
Thank you for agreeing to that.
Thank you very much.
You made us very happy.
You got it. Great minds think alike. Anyway, uh, what I'd like to do now is introduce our licensed architect, Melissa Mermelstein.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Mermelstein, M E R.
Please, please raise your right hand.
My apologies.
Thank you. You solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and your, your credentials, please.
Sure.
And keep the microphone near your mouth so we can hear you.
Sure. Um, Melissa Mermelstein, M E R, M E L, S T E I N. I'm a graduate of the City College of New York, Spitzer School of Architecture. I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey. I'm a commercial department manager at BF Design, and the architectural sets were prepared under my supervision.
Thank you. We accept your credentials.
Thank you, and if you could, um, please describe the floor plans of the buildings and the elevations. And if you're going to rely on any exhibits, I believe Anthony should have them. Oh, there we go. We have one of them up already.
Um, so as we discussed, the application is for, uh, four building campus, um, one elementary school and two high schools. Um, the elementary school is, um, is proposing twenty classrooms, um, offices, tutoring rooms, um, to support those classrooms. The high school is, um, is, sorry, is proposing, sorry, uh, fifty, sorry, no, that twenty classrooms, um, with offices and again, um, you know, all the things that are needed to support those classes. Um, the, the exhibit up on the screen before us is a colored rendering of the high school building, um, throughout the campus. The, um, materials and, um, you know, palette of, of, um, again, materials that we're proposing is to keep the campus cohesive. Um, we're, um, using a mixture of brick, stucco, um, wood look and metal accents. Um, these materials are durable and timeless. Um, each building are, um, if I can trouble you to?
Well, just so the record's clear, the first exhibit that's up there is exhibit A twelve. Can you just tell us which school that is?
Sure, that's the high school.
Okay, and then we wanna go to another exhibit?
Let's go to A thirteen, please. Thank you. Um, that's the second high school, A fourteen. The elementary school. And lastly, A fifteen, the gym building. So, um, as you can see, the material are, you know, cohesive throughout the campus. Um, you know, we're looking to build a beautiful campus for the students, for the staff, and for the community. Um, and, um, sorry if I can actually trouble you to go back to A fourteen for one moment. As I was saying, each building employs a canopy and, um, a articulated entrance as a wayfinding measure throughout the campus so that parents and students can, you know, easily find their way to each of the various schools.
Uh, just one thing I wanted to point out. I know in the first public hearing and in one of the review letters, there was a call out for a building height variance. I believe that was just a error in the plan.
That is correct. We have amended the building height and fully conform.
Okay, so that all the buildings will be conformance with the township ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. That's all the questions I really have for the architect, unless there's specific questions with respect to any of the floor layouts, et cetera?
Thank you. Mr. Peters? Anyone from the board?
At, at the first hearing, it was noted that the site plans and the architects' plans don't match as it relates to the overall building height. The site engineer or the owner gave testimony that the building heights are gonna be revised. Can you confirm as the preparer of the plans that your plans are the ones, in fact, that are going to be revised?
Correct, and they have been revised, yes.
But they haven't been submitted to the board yet.
Um, the exhibit, sorry. Exhibit. A eight?
I'll have to ask Ms. Jennings, I don't know if we exhibit A eight. If we have revised, if we have an exhibit, that's one thing. If we have revised plans for the record, just.
Sure, they, they will fully conform with the, with the, um, height.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, thank you for giving us a much more fully set, fully baked. The plans are much more precise than we've seen in the past, and we very often get cookie cutter plans that aren't fully baked. Um, you know, the plans really point out how the deliveries are gonna get in, you know, with the food, how it's gonna go, how it's gonna get to the children properly and efficiently. So I just wanted to thank you for that, coming prepared. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Michelini, anything?
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
That's all right, Melissa Mermelstein.
What's the last name?
Mermelstein, M E R, M E L, S T E I N.
I'll call you Melissa if that's okay. Melissa, how tall these buildings?
Thirty-five feet overall building height.
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-five.
Oh, thirty-five, okay. And where is that measured from?
Per the ordinance, it's measured at the grade plane to the top of the roof.
All right, and is there going to be any additional grading on the site that would raise the current elevation?
If you know. I don't know offhand, but again, we plan to fully conform with the 35 maximum height.
What architectural features, if any, exist with regard to the building so as to try to minimize their view and sheer scope and size by the neighbors? In other words, neighbors are going to be looking at this, residential neighbors, farm neighbors. What, if anything, about these buildings has or can be done to minimize the size of this in terms of their views?
Sure. Well, if we go to the site plan for a moment, I believe that is exhibit A2? What do you have up? It's all right.
A14.
A14. No, I'm sorry, what, on the tab, on top, you have one of our site plans up? There we go. So you can see that the largest building, the elementary school, the right-hand side elevation is what's facing the neighbor. So the image that we saw previously.
Sorry, do you have a pointer so you could show everybody what you're referring to?
The right-hand side elevation is what would be facing the neighboring property, while this wide elevation is facing the campus in general. This building is the, is the high school is smaller than the one that we were just looking at.
That's that building you're just on the northwest side, that's a high school?
That's correct.
Okay, and what is being done along the rear of that high school architecturally, if anything, to help ameliorate the large structure that the neighbors are going to view from Amalane and next door?
Well, 35 feet is the maximum height, so for a building the size, that is a low-line building, in my opinion. But the rear elevation is, you know, a standard rear elevation with window punches and kind of is what it is.
Are there windows in the rear of that building?
That is correct.
So students can look out into the backyards and into the neighboring properties?
So I've spoken to my client about this. We plan on frosting the lower portion of the window for privacy and keeping the upper portion clear, and the upper portion of the window will have the upper ball part of the window.
And the lighting, will there be any lighting in the rear of that building per se?
If there is any lighting proposed, it's for security only and meant to illuminate the direct adjacent area of the building and not to illuminate out.
So is that, is that lighting shielded? How is that lighting provided?
Our building-mounted lighting that points downward.
That ports, points downward?
That's correct.
So none of it will go onto the neighboring property?
That is not the intention of the...
I know it may not be the intention, but I want to make sure that that's understood in a condition of any approval, that no lighting on the, on the buildings are going to shine into or even toward the neighboring properties. They will be downlighting.
That is correct, downlighting.
And are there any, behind any of these buildings, is there any lighting that's proposed that's on a stanchion or a pole of some type?
That's a civil matter that Mr. Stevens can address.
So you don't know?
I believe we have a lighting plan, and I believe Mr. Stevens addressed all that during his direct testimony.
I'm not sure he addressed it all, but I agree that he did address some of it. In terms of noise, what, what noise devices will be on these buildings, if any?
I believe that my client addressed that in his testimony earlier about the bell ringing twice a day. That's the only noise devices that I'm aware of.
Okay, and is there some kind of a speaker mount, and where are those speakers mounted?
Again, I think that my client can address that.
So your buildings, as you've designed them, don't show that?
Correct.
So we don't know where it's going to be exactly?
As I understand them, they're meant to face the parking lot and not face the rear of the building as a device for dismissal.
And that's what you would recommend, right? Okay. Now, in these buildings, there's been testimony that there'll be no, they won't be converted to banquet halls or shools or any other kind of use. Is that, is that as correct?
That is correct.
All right, so there will only be schools?
Yes.
And they will be limited to the number of students that's been proposed?
That is correct.
Okay. Are there any kitchens in the buildings that you've, as you've designed them?
There is a worm kitchen in the elementary school.
Okay, but there's no kitchen where they have regular ovens where food could be prepared, correct? And no kitchens where there's regular refrigerators to, for food, other than what might serve the cold lunches?
That is correct.
Can you just tell me the dimensions of these schools, how big they are?
Yes. The elementary school is 336 feet wide, 160 feet deep. The two high schools are 250 feet, four inches wide and 100 feet, four inches deep. The gym is 141 feet, two inches wide and 71 foot, two deep.
All right, so the high school at the top of the, of this exhibit, what exhibit is this?
A16, says it on the right hand.
At the top of A16, oh, there it is, yeah, I see it, on the northwest side, that's the same size as the other high school? I thought you said that that was smaller.
The two high schools are the same size. The elementary school is larger, being that it accommodates more.
Okay, I just, I just want to clarify.
Absolutely.
The high school at the top of the map is the same as the one in the front of the property near the road?
They're mirror images of each other.
In terms of delivery trucks, what kind of, architecturally, what kind of delivery loading docks exist on these properties?
I believe last time, Mr. Stevens mentioned that the loading area is in front of the school, but we have accommodated for loading in the sides of each school with additional walkways and doors.
Just to cut you off real quick, you didn't prepare these plans, correct?
They were prepared under my supervision. Oh, no.
No, right, these are Mr. Stevens. I believe that, you may disagree with me, Mr. Michalini, but I believe that Mr. Stevens already testified as to the character and nature of these plans. By you testifying against, you're essentially just a layman testifying to plans that you didn't correct, you didn't create. If, if we could just solidate the testimony only to, to her degrees and to the plans that he...
Yeah, my question was architecturally, what did her design or what was provided by the buildings architecturally with regard to loading zones, and she referred to this plan. So that's my question, architecturally, what's provided in terms of a loading dock, loading area on the buildings that you designed?
So we have provided a side entrance, side door for deliveries in and out of the building, adjacent to the multipurpose room, which is the dining room.
And how, how big of a, let's say, is there a loading dock as such?
The loading dock is a civil matter, so architecturally, there is a door on the side of the building for loading and unloading of...
And how big is that door?
Double door, I believe.
It's a double door?
I could double check that, yes.
Is that like an overhead door or a swing open French door type door?
Swing open door, six feet wide.
Six feet wide?
Yes.
So that's the only loading area for these high school, for the high schools and for the elementary school?
The intention is that the deliveries would be loaded and unloaded through that side door.
Okay, and there was testimony that there would only be box trucks coming to the site, no tractor trailers whatsoever?
As far as I understand.
And is your...
We did say in the beginning of the year for furniture, there might be tractor trailers.
Correct, but other than that, no tractor trailers, and that's your design?
Yeah, Ms. Michalini, you're asking her questions to statement of operations and anything like that. I mean, from what she indicated, she only created the architectural plans.
Right, I just, my question started with your design and you interrupted me, and I believe she's the one who designed things, right?
I understand, but she also, we already had testimonies to the statement of operation.
I'm going to put a statement on the record. You guys have been trying to cut me off from the beginning, and I don't appreciate it, and I think it's wrong, and I think it is a basis for appeal. So having said that, I will stop my questions because obviously you don't want me to ask you.
I'm only cutting you off as to what she prepared. I understand.
Yes? Okay. You're for five minutes, we're okay. Well, it's just five minutes, thank you. Anyone from the public? Well, aside from public comment, we'll have the ability to ask any questions from any of our witnesses. There will be a five-minute time limit on all questions or comments.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand.
Solemnly swear affirm, testimony, information, questions or comments will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Please state your, your name and address for the record.
Susan Cooper, Willata Drive in Jackson. Willata Drive in Jackson. I just was listening to the testimony from last week and this week. In reference to the schools that were going to be on, built on Leesville, we all had very big concerns about the sewage system and the waste management as well, especially backing up the people's houses being within 30 feet of wells, et cetera. I know that the planning board at that meeting in October had suggested hiring a wastewater management expert to kind of come in and check everything out and make sure everything was the way it should be for, you know, the safety of not only the residents there, but the students, just in case anything, you know, went wrong with these treatment centers. Is that something the planning board might consider again, like for this thing, since that project didn't even happen?
So as it is a outside agency approval, there is a DEP process to regulate these systems. We're going to leave it for the asset agency instead of taking care of it.
Perfect. So my other question is, I don't know how the protocol works, so this is like going to be a very quick question so the people can come up. As far as the Ocean County Planning Department and the Jackson Planning Board, like looking at the Oprah request for this, for this project, the Ocean County Planning Department actually said that this whole plan was deemed incomplete as of November, and they actually had a list of 14 items that were outstanding that they're waiting to have amended, and a lot of them, you know, directly affect the safety of the residents of Jackson, not only that live right there, but I know my husband travels this county road to, to work. Is there, like, how does it work? Do they need to have approval through Ocean County Planning as before here, or they have to get approval here, then go there? Like, how does it work? Because looking at this, I feel like there's a lot of things in this plan that are not, that are outstanding as far as Ocean County engineers consider.
The easy question is both.
Both, okay.
So, so it'll be a condition of approval.
Right, so I mean, like, you'll, you would say yes despite all of these things, especially with, you know, the drainage problems, the lights, the volume?
It's, it's easy to get confused because it's convoluted, so there's... I mean, you, just with what you brought up alone, and you're looking at like seven different outside agency approvals, so we can only do one thing, then it has to go to different jurisdictions, different boards, Ocean County Planning Board being one of them, and then they have to sign off as well, and if they don't, then, you know, theoretically, depending on what, you know, jurisdiction or board it is, then some stuff comes back.
Okay, so if you say yes tonight, and then this, these requests are all not approved, this, they can't start construction, correct? Like, this has to, all, all these 14 things have to be addressed?
I'm not sure exactly what you're looking at.
I can give it to you.
If it's a typical, you know, condition of approval list, then you are correct, yeah.
Yeah, it's the engineer's report from the Ocean County engineer. So, I mean, I can get...
If Connor doesn't sign off, then they cannot build.
Okay.
Yeah, just, maybe I can help explain too. So what happens is, let's just say they say yes, they, they're going to adopt a written resolution, and in that resolution, there'll be all sorts of conditions. And the conditions are, you have to comply with everything that Ocean County Planning Board said, you have to comply with everything the DEP says. So before you can even get a construction permit and start building, we have to literally get a letter from Ocean County saying, you have satisfied all of our conditions, you can issue a building permit. We got to get something from the DEP. So every agency that has jurisdiction over this application has to sign off before the town gives the final sign off. So this is just the planning board's part, and if they grant an approval, then it's up to Mr. Cle and Mr. Peters to make sure that we actually meet all the resolution compliance issues. So it's a huge problem. This isn't going to happen like next week.
I saw these, and I was like, wow, can they actually get approved tonight? And then yet all of this stuff is still outstanding as of November with this?
It's the beginning of the process.
Okay, just checking, I want to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
266.
Please, please raise your right hand. Sorry, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm testimony, information, questions or comments direct before the board will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last and your address, please.
Greg Stafford Smith, S T A F F O R D hyphen S M I T H, 266 East Veterans Highway, Jackson, New Jersey.
Thank you.
My first question is to the president from PDS, with regard to your sewer. Is there going to be a licensed operator or someone maintaining this facility on-site?
Mr. Ward, just the microphone, please. Come forward, thank you.
Be a condition of the state approval.
Okay, is there dissolved air flotation, or is there ozone, any disinfection process, or is it just merely filtration and anaerobic?
It's filtration and anaerobic, there's no chemicals included.
Okay, no communators, no wet wells, no?
No.
What about sludge removal?
Well, there may be a wet well, there may be pumps involved to, to, to bring the sewers to the, to the site or to the treatment system.
Okay, my... The reason I'm asking you, so there is no TWA application in place at this point?
That's correct.
Okay, so all of this is just talk right now. There is no decision by the DEP to allow this process to go on by?
There is no decision by DEP yet, that's correct.
I want to preface, I have 30 years' experience in dealing with wet wells, sewer lift stations and the collection process and primary treatment.
Understand.
Okay, I don't, I don't think the questions about the design are being answered with regard to how the... the process of cleaning a wet well or extraction of waste does not break down. How is that going to be accommodated? Are you gonna have a vac truck come by on a regular basis? This, is it monitored by SCADA when you go over the nutrient levels? Are you gonna wind up having an alarm system?
There's a lot of questions in that. Um.
Yeah, there sure is. There's a lot of helpful.
Well, any, any, any septic system, be it a single family house or this system, has a septic tank to collect solids, and that, of course, would need to be removed periodically. This site is no different than in the single family house. So the the.
Single family houses don't drop twenty-six thousand gallons of sewage a day.
But but they have a solids tank to collect solids. It has to be maintained periodically to remove. Understand, and all of that is part of uh, all those maintenance activities are part of this project.
Yeah, I I guess what troubles me is that allegedly there was no sewer available. You're bringing water from the same place where there is a sewer lift station. It's outside the sewer area, but you have a trailer park that's in the sewer area that wasn't, didn't have to comply. And I realize that some of those things were connect, rather. Some of those things are not your jurisdiction. I'm just wondering how we get to this point in time where we have something so close, yet so far. To me, it's a regional issue that really needs to have collective thought as to how we deal with this. However, you've answered my question. It's state monitor, it'll be a licensed operator, it'll be visited on a daily basis, samples will be taken, reports will be filled out.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, where where is the uh road expert? I have, I have the luxury of being lot eighteen, which is just about directly across the street from this entrance where the traffic light is proposed. I asked Mr. Ray before about what the width of the street was gonna be. It's thirty-three feet now, edge to edge. I believe it's gonna be closer to fifty-five. Is that correct?
Somewhere around that.
Right. This entrance is approximately four hundred and fifty feet coming out of a blind curve at from going from east, east to west travel. Is the predominant traffic flow to this facility going to be from east to west?
I have to look at the traffic study and give me a second.
Let me rephrase it. Do you anticipate most of the traffic coming from east to west?
From the east.
From the east. Okay, and we're talking somewhere near a five hundred and seventy-four ins and outs, exchanges of traffic in the morning, which is about one every six point five seconds.
Uh, that that's the total of the ins and outs. So uh, you'd be better off looking at the higher of the two. It'd be three sixty-seven in in the morning, of which sixty percent is expected to come from the east.
That's correct. Okay, and this is in a traffic light, five hundred and fifty feet from a blind curve at fifty miles an hour, just seventy.
Sir, it's not a blank. The county will not approve a traffic signal at this location unless the site distance is adequate.
I'm glad you brought that up about the county, because they haven't heard from you guys since uh November, where they've deemed that the traffic plan was incomplete. The fourteen required things have not been addressed. To me, it just is, we're gonna wait for one thing to happen, and I think that's what the attorney was pointing out, that this is all becomes a conditional response. But you know something? When you're the guy sitting in the driveway opposite this type of project, that's not good enough. What's good enough is to have information that's readily available before you good people get to say yes or no. That's all I have to know.
Thank you. No, we're still going. I'm sorry? Um, that we we announced that we were doing everything currently, so you could come back up, you could come back up after. Okay, sure. Thank you. Can you please, please raise the right hand?
Joseph.
Please raise your right hand. Thank you. Uh, do you affirm that the information, testimony, questions or comments presented before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Please state your name, spell your last and your address, please.
Joseph Posen, P O S E N, Two Princess Court in Lakewood. I'm just amazed what a beautiful plan this is. I've been listening for two nights, spending my time. I don't know how you do it every Monday night. I'm just here twice, and it's been a long evening hearing the back and forth, back and forth. Um, the responses were beautiful. I think they're well versed and they have all the information. And it's a beautiful piece of property coming from Lakewood. How well the buildings are spread out, the green acreage, the parking, it it's just a beautiful plan, hearing about the traffic lights, that there won't be backups. And there'll be turning lanes and how the sewer system is set up. It's just gonna be a wonderful place for the kids. Right now, we're bringing four hundred and fifty-seven Jackson kids to Lakewood. And there's no need for that. They belong in Jackson. They pay taxes in Jackson. They're Jackson kids. Kidderlach, little Jackson kids. Why do they have to be bused to Lakewood daily when we can build this beautiful buildings, elementary schools, high schools for these kids? It's just a shame that we could put them here. They spend forty-five minutes to an hour a day to Lakewood, back from Lakewood. They live here in Jackson. My recommendation would be that this is a wonderful opportunity for these kids. There'll be a gym. They'll have a place to play. They'll have a place to hang outside. They won't be walking anybody's backyards. Nothing to worry about. They're well disciplined kids. They'll follow rules. There'll be fences. So I think there's a perfect opportunity for these children to have a place to be with a lot of green acre trees, beautiful land where they can prosper and do well and be great students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, when I moved to Lakewood in March of twenty, rather, to Jackson in March of twenty fourteen from Lakewood, we carefully looked into the area that surrounds our home for potential development. We're pleased to see that the restrictions on the properties in and around our new home were zoned for R two, three and R five. These zoning requirements were further supported in two thousand and three when an application was made to the zoning board of adjustment to allow development of the self-storage facility on the same property we're talking about tonight. This was denied. The application before you is one that is a classic example of intent versus impact. Whereas intent is to provide a use that is considered to be a good thing, but is actually will create hardship, stress, a marked depreciation, the quality of life, and is known to as, is known to those who live there. The responsibility of the planning board is to develop a plan, known as a master plan. Once it is adopted, must be developed, developed zoning that complements the master plan, manage the plans written or amend the plan to adjust, to correct for deficiencies. This application is seeking to construct two high schools and one elementary school and a gymnasium. Twenty-three hundred and fifty students plus staff on thirty-nine acres. By comparison, Jackson Liberty has twelve hundred students on a hundred and fifty acres. I'm also unsure if the applicant is relocating a business or expanding one, or if this is the entire scope of the project. The facility will generate twenty-three thousand plus gallons of sewage per day, typically in an eight-hour period. Close to equivalent to three gasoline tankers. That's the size of fluid. The sewer effluent is near the waters that contribute to the Tom's River and other sources of potable water. To this date, no application has been under review by the D E P for a T W A permit. The students will primarily be bused in this facility necessitating approximately a hundred buses per day, as well as automobiles used by staff and services needed to support the operation. Transportation event will take place between eight and nine-thirty. It's now eight and nine, which really expede, it ramps up the exchanges. And again, between three-thirty and five. On a two-lane road with a fifty mile an hour speed limit, the planned entrance is five hundred and fifty feet west of a blind curve on Dunhill Road, where vehicles are traveling in excessive seventy feet per second. The applicant has inferred that the traffic signal will be installed to control the flow from the main entrance. And yet, as of March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, Ocean County Engineering has not been com- has not received a completed application from the applicant. In fact, the last time they heard anything from was in November of twenty twenty-two. I firmly object to this application for the following reasons. The sewer effluent is endangering the potable water supply in surrounding area that the Tom's River and the downstream destinations. The traffic will be impede the ability to enter and exit my home. It will put undue stress on the existing corridor that is currently utilized by construction equipment, tractor trailers, buses, garbage trucks, delivery vehicles, as well as a motoring public to move freely and safely. This section of Route five twenty is the main roof from Interstate one ninety-five to the adjoining communities and in the Jersey Shore. My position is not anti schools. It's quite the contrary. There is much better locations in Jackson Township that could accommodate such a facility. One such location is North County Line Road. This area has municipal water and sewer, electric, fire hydrants, four-lane divided highway. This is where a master plan that considered all its constituents' needs could have been, the constituencies could have been helpful. I urge you to deny this application and work to provide a school zone in Jackson Township. It is my understanding that each member of the planning board has taken an oath to uphold and support the constitution of the state of New Jersey. And whereas in Article One, the rights and privileges state the following. All people are by nature free and independent and have certain natural and unalienable rights, among which of those are enjoying and defending life and liberty of acquiring, possessing and protecting property and pursuing and obtaining safety and happiness. Similar words can be found in the Declaration of Independence and furthered in the Fourteenth Amendment of the U S Constitution, many of the rulings of the Supreme Court. If one only needs proof of the impact of such a facility in such an area as this, all you need to do is attempt to travel on five twenty-eight to Route nine via Cross Street in Lakewood any day of the week from seven A M till ten-thirty or from three to eight. It will be most evident that this is not a good idea. The application clearly attenuates my pursuit of happiness, and I will implore you to deny it. Thank you.
If you please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm testimony, information, questions or comments will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last and your address, please.
Yakov Lemberger, L E M B E R G E R, seventeen Camer Drive in Jackson, New Jersey. I'm a proud resident of Jackson for over six years. Um, I love every minute of living in Jackson. What a wonderful, wonderful township. We get along amazing with our neighbors. We have beautiful, beautiful relationship with all our neighbors. I am also a proud parent of students in the Chather and the Besse Vega schools that are applying for this application of Besse Yakov of Jackson. Um, as a proud parent, the school is an amazing school, amazing teachers, mentors, giving over to our children. The knowledge that they need to succeed in life, the skills that they need to succeed in life. When our children go to school on a daily basis, they take in, they're thirsty for the knowledge, for the skills to get along with their pairs, the social interactions with each other, the friendships that they build. When our children start off their day with an hour bus ride to be able to get to school, that hinders what they're able to do when they come into school. When they come in, they're already been on a bus for an hour, and they start off their day ready knocked out. Definitely hinders the ability for them to be able to get all that knowledge, to gain those skills, to be able to gain the social interactions with their friends. And even after a long day in school, when they accomplish so much and they built so much of themselves, and they come and they sit on an hour ride home, and then they come home and there's homework that they're expected to do. Homework is a great, amazing part of a student to be able to succeed in school, take their work at home, the studying. And when they come home after a long day and another hour on the bus, it definitely affects their ability to be able to study and what they're able to gain from school. As a taxpayer resident of Jackson, I kindly ask that the board proves this wonderful, wonderful project to give our children a state of their campus to be able to learn and gain that knowledge, those skills, and to be able to grow in Jackson Township.
Please raise the right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm testimony, information, questions or comments will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I will do it.
Thank you. Please state your name, spell your last and your address, please.
Brian Schnack. Uh, my last name is S C H N A A K, sixteen Dunhill in Jackson. Um. Schools are very important. I I really do appreciate it. My two sons went to private school. Um, I live in Jackson. My son went to Saint Rose in Belmar. He bust for an hour. He graduate, graduated magna cum laude. Went to Ramapo College on a scholarship, got, had a three point nine two G P A. He thrived. He drove. School is important. It's also the placement of the school is equally important. Um, we can't just have a plot of land come open and say, hey, we'll put a school there because we can, and and you can. Um, but just because you can doesn't mean you should, because there are other opportunities. I think other people have stated very eloquently. Um. I have a lot of problems with this. I I live on sixteen Dunhill, which is lot sixteen, which is uh right on the Stormwater Basin. Uh, I'm right behind the elementary school. Um, my my biggest problem when I see this plan is I've, I've got all of these buses that you guys talk about. They're going right past my back uh backyard. There's gotta be another way. And listen, there's gotta be another way to circulate the buses around there. Um, I know it's a big open plan for the students, but what happens is it's a very closed environment for myself and my neighbors. Um, I moved uh to Jackson twenty-eight years ago. My backyard, uh, in the past week, I've seen two owls. It is very wild back there. Um, it is very treed and it isn't uh is what we heard it is what it is. It's, no, it is what it is because no one's touched it. Um, my neighbors before that, they had the right to sell it, but we have the opportunity to do something and not just build it. Um, this school, when I heard there was gonna be a school, I thought, oh, it's just a school. Well, this isn't a school. This is three schools and a gym. Um, it's too crowded for this. You should see it. There are opportunities in other spots for this. It's not congruent with the layout of the land. There's houses everywhere. I said last time, from Bennett's Mill all the way to Hope Chapel, it's houses. There's a church. There's a Forest Resource Education Center, maybe a couple of uh firehouses, but it's houses. It's not, it's not this. If if this is what we want to do here, it's gonna look like my hometown where I grew up. Um, just outside of metro Atlanta. And uh it's, it's not what I grew up on. It's, it's this, just unchecked. You are here to check it. You're not here to do just what anybody says they want to do. You, you're here to do what's right for your constituents and your neighbors. And um I hope you do. Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm the testimony, information, questions or comments. You say before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Handler, H A N D L E R, Three Mimosa Court, Jackson, New Jersey. Three Mimosa, M I M O S A. I just wanna say that being in, living in Jackson for a few years, every month I get the bill, I pay the taxes. I paid taxes to public schools. I don't get anything from it. Now, I said my first, old, my first uh kid to school, and it's really hard. She goes every day, it's forty-five minutes, ten hour on the bus all the way to school. She comes back and it's really tiring and it's really when you see the bill every month and you're paying all the taxes, like, we're not even asking the township to pay for the school. We're just asking us to allow us to build a school. And I'm sure there's plenty of other places to build schools, and we probably will have to build more schools. This is only girls. I also have a boy, and he's also gonna have to go to school, you know, and you can't just wake up, oh, well, why don't you just wait for another property to come up? By that time, we'll need another school, and by then, we'll need another school. This is an opportunity that we need. There's hundreds of kids going to Ja- to Lakewood every day, spending an hour, and it's, it's ridiculous. We're all paying for this. We're all paying the taxes. We're just asking that everybody understand that you can't please everyone. You're always gonna have one neighbor or another neighbor that will have to understand. We will, we apparently, they're working very much that to satisfy everybody, that no one should really, that the quality of life should not be disturbed. But it's really impossible to just, everything should just perfect, find a place in the middle of nowhere and just one school and just a, you know, two hundred kids, and that'll solve all the issues. You know, there's hundreds, there's thousands of families of, 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 in this community in, in, in Jackson. It's only growing. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Good evening.
Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments presented before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but. You solemnly swear a firm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments presented before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name, spell your last, and your address, please.
My name is Karen Stafford Smith, S T A F F O R D hyphen Smith. I live at two sixty-six East Veterans Highway, Lot Eighteen. Uh, my question is to Ms. Marine about the traffic light that's being installed.
Just please talk into the microphone, so, here for the record. Thank you.
My question is, do you have any idea how long the traffic light will be for as far as a red light to stop? I know any place you go, places in Lakewood, sometimes you can get through the intersection about ten or twenty cars, and then it changes. In other places, you can get two or three cars through and it changes. So I'm just asking as a resident on that road and my neighbors, and we all travel at the same time the school hours are going on, and in the evening, what type of timeframe are we looking for as far as gauging how to get out of our own driveways to get to work and where we have to go?
During those peak hours from eight to nine in the morning, four to five in the afternoon, I would think that, uh, the light will have to be timed so that it lets, you know, the school buses out during the dismissal times, and in the morning too, after the school buses drop off the children. Modern traffic lights can get complicated, but very efficient in terms of setting up the timing schedule. The county can set the timing schedule up so that between those peak hours in the morning and the afternoon, it could be set up so that the maximum side street green coming out of the campus could be thirty, forty seconds, and during the rest of the day, it can be fifteen seconds. So it would have more of an impact on you being a, a local resident during those peak hours in the morning and in the afternoon, but the timing can be set up to be variable. Uh, it's done all of the time, and, um, I'm not sure exactly how the county is gonna wanna set the timing up, but it's my expectation that they'll have a, a timing plan that will give more side street green time to the campus drive during those peak hours, and then the rest of the day it would be significantly lower.
Thank you. And my question, I don't know if it's to you or Mr. Stevens, but as far as the traffic light is concerned on East Veterans, at what location, I mean, I go out my driveway and I look and I see a telephone pole, and I see another telephone pole, and I know that driveway is going to be opposite my driveway, but where, you can look at plans all you want, but I have no idea, looking at black and white paper, exactly where this stoplight is gonna be put up and exactly where the driveway is going to be.
Your, your driveway is going to be, based on the preliminary intersection plan that we've sent to the county, your driveway is going to be opposite the crosshatching that is going to mirror the left turn lane for the other direction. So what I would suggest is, and I know, I think your husband's been in touch with Mr. Jenke, the Assistant County Engineer, he's spoken to him. There may be a possibility for the county to make it a little bit easier for you to get into and off East Veterans Highway. The county maybe will allow us to break the crosshatching up in the vicinity of your driveway, create an opening, if you will. That's been done in other areas in Jackson where there are side streets, things of that nature. Just so visually for you and visually for the traffic on East Veterans Highway, they will know that there's a driveway and there's an opportunity for these people to get onto and off, uh, East Veterans Highway. I encourage you to stay in touch with the county, make your concerns known, and maybe we can do something about it.
I appreciate it because we bought, like my husband said years ago, and the, the home we live in, I don't know, many of you, I'm sure have seen the home, and we bought it knowing that that was gonna be our retirement home, and now things are changing. And this impacts the street light, the, the traffic light in front of my house, part of my property being used in the driveway across the street. So as I said, and I talked about this the last time I was here with some gentlemen after the meeting, I said to one of the gentlemen, I don't understand, I didn't expect all of this tonight, and I come in here and I hear that I'm gonna be impacted with three things. And the answer to me was the sacrifice of one for the good of all. And that infuriated me because I am a citizen. I'm also a language arts and U.S. history teacher, and I teach the Constitution Declaration and the amendments to my students. I'm retired now. But everyone is entitled to rights, and sitting on the board is a very important job, and we respect you because you're speaking up for us as a government. And it just, it, it really bothered me to hear somebody say that. That for them to get what they want, the sacrifice of one, which is myself and my family and the rest of my neighborhood, to drive out of the driveway at eight, ten in the morning, or come back in the afternoon to know because I used to live over on Cross Street, exactly what's gonna happen. And that really upsets me because I know everybody has rights, and I am all for schools because I am a teacher and come from a family of teachers, but we have to start doing what's right. We are building more and more schools, and I think that's wonderful, but we need a place to put them. We need to put them in a place where they're safe and they can access the roadways, that they can get in and out of the driveways, that they have water, that they have fire protection, that they have fire hydrants. I'm all for it. I think there's a better way to do this, and I feel that everyone can be made happy if a school zone was made, and we could start adopting these campuses because it's not one school, they're campuses, so that there's something for everyone, including the residents, because I do have rights. The pursuit of happiness, and I feel the rest of my neighbors feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Please, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments stated before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Thank you. Please state your name, spell your last, and your address, please.
Joseph R I C C H I U T I, Seven Corey Lane in Jackson. I live just down the road from where the school's gonna be on East Veterans Highway. I've got one question for the northeast corner of the property. Is that still gonna be developable, developed? I don't mean at this time, but can something be built in the northeast corner? Is there enough property to build another building?
Mr. Stevens or Mr. Borden, if you could answer his question?
I think you're talking about this area up here to the top of A sixteen.
Now, go to your left a little bit more. That triangle area that's open.
This right here?
Yes.
That's not our property. That's our neighbor's property.
Okay. That was my question.
I believe that's the, the owner that Mr. McGlinley represents, that property.
Yeah, that's like nine point seven acres.
Correct.
Uh, the lights or traffic light that's gonna be installed, is that gonna be twenty-four, seven? Or just during school hours, or?
Mr. Ray, would you like to?
So pulling up at two o'clock in the morning, you're gonna be controlled by that traffic light? It's a main road out there. There's a lot of traffic. Uh, as far as like the, the students getting bussed from Jackson to Lakewood, we do need schools here, private schools. I agree with that. But we have to do it responsibly and do it in areas that they can make the trip easier. But the reason why it takes an hour to get to Lakewood to school is fifteen minutes in Jackson, forty-five minutes stuck in bumper-to-bumper traffic in Lakewood. You know, it's a fact, and if we keep doing this, it's gonna be an hour in Jackson pretty soon, because the traffic is gonna get worse. Uh, the parking in this, I'll call it all, the campus. They say there's enough parking for the school. But if any of the professionals developed any of the schools on, uh, across from West Gate. Mr. Shay, I don't know if you did the traffic study for the, the, the four new schools that they're building on, across from West Gate. Are you familiar with that area?
Just maybe into the microphones so we could hear you?
Said near West Gate?
Right. It's just across the border into Lakewood from Jackson.
Oh, in Lakewood? Um, I personally am not familiar with it.
Then you got, uh, Mr. Warren, you haven't done any of those school buildings? Because they, apparently, I'm sure they had enough parking for their schools. But if you go there any, any time of the day, you got overflow parking on Central and on the little corner streets. And there's, there's one school there that has the signs up, no parking, you'll be towed. It doesn't do no good. And when this campus is overflowing with parking, where are they gonna park? There's no place on the county line to park, while you can. But what's gonna stop them from being parked in there? And as far as the traffic coming in and out of a school, counting the buses, and I'm going by their statement of operations, with the number of buses, with the staff members, and only seven percent driven by parents. And I'm sure there's gonna be more than seven percent if it's a snow day, if it's raining. But between the hours of eight o'clock and eight forty, you're gonna have over four hundred and seventy-five vehicles in and out in forty-five minutes. That's a lot of traffic at that light, and it's gonna get backed up, not knowing how long the county's gonna let that light sit there green and then turn red. It's a main through fair. The trucks coming from one ninety-five, they come down five twenty-seven, five twenty-eight to the industrial parks. I find it hard to believe that it's gonna be able to handle everything. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear a firm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name, spell your last, and your address, please.
My name is Raphael David. Last name is D A V I D. I live at one ninety-four Bartley Road in Jackson. Um, I moved here two years ago. Uh, my daughter goes to Beis Vega in Lakewood, and it's a forty-five to fifty-five minute bus ride each way. Um, I actually just had my second daughter ten days ago, March tenth. And it just, it's a lot for, my daughter's in first grade, seven-year-old girl, and it's just tremendous amount of time that she goes and spends the bus, bus every day. You know, I know a lot of people are saying how, you know, it impacts traffic. There's right near me on Manhattan Road, there's Lucy Hansen Elementary School, which every day, school time, eight o'clock in the morning, I pass by, and, and it works. I just wanna say, I grew up in Brooklyn. Down the block from me, there was, there was a public school, thousands of kids every day would come, and it worked. We never, we never had a problem. Um, again, I moved here, paid my taxes, I pay a lot of taxes to the county, to the township, to the state. And like the woman mentioned previously, we all have our rights, and it's just, it's, it's just, it's, it's hard. It's hard for me to see how my daughter, she spends an hour on the bus coming home, a seven-year-old girl. And, you know, again, like I said, I have a newborn girl, and it's just, it's, it's, we all understand. It's, it's, it's just, it's super important, just, you know, for, to, to be able to have a school in the neighborhood and that I don't have to travel forty-five to fifty-five minutes each way to bring my daughter to school. You know, I have my son in school, and, and, and I'm, I'm hoping that we can have schools for, for boys also in the township. And again, yeah, I think it's, it's an important, we, we all have our rights, and I think, you know, and this is, this is what I need. It's important for me. It's important for me to be able to send my children to a school in, in my neighborhood. They don't have to bus my child for an hour each way. And again, we come in front of a board who, they're perceptive to everybody's needs and, and appreciate it tremendously that, that they're willing to listen to, to all of our needs. You know, a point, a lot of people said, we all understand that people need schools, but it should be done in a better way. You know, we understand that this is, this is a private school. Um, a lot of it's done with private donor funding, and a lot of the, a lot of, a lot of what went into purchasing this part of land, I'm sure had to do with budgetary concerns or whatever. A lot of, a lot of what was done in other townships where the township just gave away land, different things along those lines. I'm sure you'd complain if that happened. This, this isn't what happened. Over here, this is, the school identified a land that worked for them. And this is something that a lot of people in this community now need. A lot of people are moving here, and, and there's something that a lot of people need. And I just wanna say, it's, it's super, super important for me. Like I said, you know, I just had my second girl, and it's just, you know, hopefully a bigger family, and, you know, hopefully it'll, it just, you know, the need just grows more and more. And I appreciate you taking the time to listen. Thank you very much.
Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments presented before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and your address, please.
My name is Arnold Lomita, L O M I T A, at Eight West Dickens Court, Jackson, New Jersey. All right, uh, as far as the traffic is concerned, I don't think anybody's mentioned, uh, Whiteville Development Center being, uh, built over there. Was that put into the equation? We also have, uh, something being built on West Commodore. That's a Chris Streben Glories. That's another area that's being built up.
Yeah, yes, I'm aware of those projects. They're in the growth rate, in the NJDOT growth rate.
All right.
One other thing, I think what we're saying here, a lot of people are saying, we're not talking about not building in, in Jackson. That's not the point. We're saying, we're gonna build. Do you build in somebody else's backyard, or do you build it in an area where it's not affecting other people and their livelihood and their living? I don't wanna see somebody in my backyard, uh, school in my backyard, and that's what's gonna happen. And that's the only thing we're mentioning here. Build it in an area where it's conducive to a school. That's it.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear a firm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments presented before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name, spell your last, and your address, please.
My name is Celeste Bova, B O V A. I'm at fifteen Emma Lane. Um, I have some concerns about the school being built here in this part of Jackson. Before I get started, I just wanted to let everybody here know, um, as far as school goes, I have sent my kids to public school here in Jackson. I've also sent my kids here to private school in this town. Um, as far as busing goes, my children have sat on Jackson's school buses for an hour and a half, four or five mile drive. I just want to inform you that is a possibility. Um, you're being picked up from all areas of Jackson.
So I'm sorry to cut you off real quick. Um, are you represented by an attorney or your family represented by an attorney here?
Uh, my husband is. I am not.
Represented by Mr. McGilney?
Yes.
Okay, uh, are you married? Is it?
I'm sorry.
I, if, if you two are married?
Yes.
Um, then it would be, you'd be represented by Mr. McGilney?
Okay.
I, I represent Mrs. Bova. I've never specifically met with her. Her husband is, is an owner of the property next door. She is not. She lives on Emma Lane with her husband, but I'm representing her husband in conjunction with the property next door, the nine point seven acres. So she is doing this on her own. I didn't help her prepare her comments. You need to let her talk because she's here on her own.
I, I understand. Just wanted to make sure that, you know, she wasn't.
Okay. Okay, so I do have, um, I'm sorry, I'm very nervous. I apologize. I'm trying to keep my thoughts together here. We chose this part of Jackson, um, because it's so rural. Uh, we love that. I love the nature here. I'm a big bird person. I'm a big horse person. Um, but there are some things, uh, for me in my, my quality of life. So I'm concerned about my backyard will be facing the high school at the top of the screen there. Um, one of the best things about, uh, my neighborhood is, um, the back, our backyard. I mean, pretty much everybody. So, um, you know, it's my solace. I have, uh, we spend summer evenings there. Um, we have a pool in the backyard that's relatively new that we've been waiting a long time to get. I enjoy the stars at night, and I enjoy the, the birds in this town, and much of the other wildlife. We have a lot of wildlife. We've had a bear come through our neighborhood. I've seen coyote. I've seen red wing, um, red-shouldered hawks, all kinds of hummingbirds. And I'm sorry, hummingbirds, not all kinds. We only have one kind here. All types of birds and all types of animals. Um, I truly love this. I'm concerned about the sounds that'll be coming from the school and disturbing my peace and quiet, which I'm entitled to here, being that I assumed in the beginning that this was in a resident, um, an R-three zoned area. I did not know that a school of this size, uh, would be permitted to be put into this area. I don't understand how that worked out. uh, would be permitted to be put into this area. I don't understand how that worked out. Um, this school will be about this, bigger than Memorial. So, yeah, some serious concerns. I'm concerned about sound pollution, light pollution. I know that they've tried to address that as best they can. We all know that's not gonna happen. We know what parking lots look like. Um, I will be seeing light there. Um, I am extremely concerned about, uh, concerned about the traffic that's gonna be coming in and out. I'm concerned, uh, my son just got his permit. Uh, already teaching him how to pull out of our development, which is already a huge concern. Um, that was a passing zone. We were told by the county at one point, there weren't enough deaths that have happened there for them to paint a solid line, because we have a lot of cars that pass. I myself almost got into major accidents this past summer um, in that area, and have been run off the road more than once pulling out of my own development. I can't imagine what it's going to be like with more traffic and people rushing to get to work in the morning. Okay, and, yeah, and visually. So that was my concerns. Um, I'm concerned about the construction sounds. Uh, and if everything before construction and, and, and concerns after construction. My road, uh, our development is on um, East Veterans Highway. We have a lot of horses here. I do have horses on, um, my husband's property. There's Honky Tonk Ranch up the street, Cranberry Bog Farm, Golden Fields, which was the property that is now going to be a school, had thirty horses on it at one point. Consalina is right on the other side of the development, just north of this property. They board horses there. There's Cantor Creek just past the light, and several privately-owned, you know, horse farms here. Um, so, just to give you an idea of this part of Jackson, for those who don't understand, um, I have lived in this town for twenty-six years. Uh, my husband grew up in this town. We paid a lot of taxes here. I also have sent my kids to private school. I understand what you're going through. But there is a better place for the school to go. This is not the place for the school, I'm sorry. It's not only affecting me, it's affecting everybody in my neighborhood. We only have one entrance in and out. It's approximately fifty homes in there. The other side, Dunhill, same issues. I'm concerned about, not that it's a my concern, but the two houses that are going, I don't know how they're gonna get in and out of that, that two, uh, properties that this school be encircling. Um, I'm concerned about the metalwoods, the retirement community, uh, close by, and how they're gonna be pulling in and out of this development. Okay. I also have concerns, um, about the horses. So here's my concerns about the horses. I have a serious concern about the septic. Septic, as we all know, in Jackson, and in my development, a lot of homes have been selling recently, and a lot of septics have been failing. Um, I am concerned that if this septic does fail, how it's gonna affect the property that my horses are on. So um, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the soil. I'm concerned about grazing grass. I'm concerned about well water. I'm concerned about, um, pesticides being used on the property that could run off into my property. I'm concerned about herbicides that could run off, onto this property where the horses are. I'm concerned about mosquito fog being used. Um, I am, I'm sorry. I'm also concerned about construction sounds. How's that gonna affect, I, I don't know how, I really don't know how this is going to happen. I know trees will come down and buildings will be built, and there'll be lots of loud noises. Um, horses do get spooked. Hopefully, I'm not on the horse at that moment that they get spooked. Uh, horses have been known to try to jump fences, believe it or not, went for terrible spooking. They've been caught up on fences. They've had to be euthanized. Um, concerned about dust and dirt. That's all before. After, I'm concerned about all the buses that will be coming in and out of this area. Uh, the paddocks are butt up against the right in and right out northern entrance of the property. Um, will they be lining up? Will they be running diesel fuel? Is this something I need to be concerned about? These weren't concerns before because this was a horse farm next door, and that is, was not an issue. I didn't have to worry about pollutants. I didn't have to worry about possibly trash. Um, I have to worry about students reaching over the fence. Because of the safety of the students, that's a big concern for me. I'm also concerned the safety of my horses. Somebody might decide to feed my horse something it's not permitted to have. You know, where are the children going to play? Just a lot of concerns, a lot of concerns. Thank you very much.
Quick question for you. So are, are you on title on that property as well? Do you, do you jointly?
No.
It's just in your husband's name?
Yes. Yes. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm asking the board to reconsider, and, um, not put the school here, thank you. I don't, I don't disagree with schools. I think there should be good private schools, as I said my own, but I just don't think this is the place for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, I represent, uh, Mr. Bova, and he's a member of the LLC that owns the property next door. I'm just gonna let him talk. If I feel like he missed something, I'll come up and ask him a question, but for purposes of allowing this to be expeditious, he does have photos that show his view that he would like to mark. Uh, maybe they can be marked first, and then Jeff, you can, after you're sworn, you can give testimony.
So this, this will be the equivalent of the closing, uh, testimony?
Or from, for me.
From, from your people. No, no, from, from, from your point. This will be the closing. Okay.
The only plan I represent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and your address, please.
My name is Jeff Bova, B O V A. I reside at fifteen Emma Lane, but I am a, uh, managing partner of two-three-seven East Veterans, which is the adjoining property. And I also am an owner of a piece of property that my mother lives in off of Meadowbrook, which is adjacent to this project as well.
I could just please a little microphone there. Thank you.
Sure. So I'd like to enter these.
Let's mark that. I believe we're up to oh-two. Sorry, I believe we're up to oh-two. Thank you.
There's three different sets, so, uh, Jeff, just give her one of each, and then you can give additional copies to the board and explain what they are, or three or four. Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna mark that. Oh, the first page in the set is oh-two, the second page in the set is oh-three, and the third page in the set will be oh-four. Thank you.
You need, did you keep one for yourself?
No.
You need one for yourself.
All right.
Did you give them the full set? Sure.
All right, just for, for the record, Mr. Riker is going to be leaving now. Thank you. Family emergency.
This one too. It's for them. Here's another one. You need one of each. Right? Those are the four, right? Those are the four. Yeah. So you can explain. Yeah, that'll, that's true.
Thank you. This is one, mark two, but this is maybe two, okay. Sorry, there are four pages, so we're going to be marking the fourth page, zero-fives.
I think I'm gonna help him.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Also, like this.
We have these. They can pass.
It's more.
You ready? Okay, Mr. Bova, I'm gonna show you what's been marked as oh-two. Uh, first of all, before we get to that, let's, let's go to where you live, for the record. Where did, and, and you live on Emma Lane, correct?
On Emma Lane.
But the property next door you indicated is property that you own, which is approximately nine-point-seven acres, right? And you own that through an LLC called Omega LLC?
Omega Farm.
Omega Farm.
Sorry, just please into the microphone so we could have a clear record. Thank you.
Omega Farm.
Yeah, and what, what kind of farm is it?
It's a operating farm. We have horses on there in the front half up there.
Maybe you could pull up a one, just so I believe it's a better aerial view of the site.
So the front half of the property, there's a residence. The middle portion of the property is our paddocks, and the rear portion of the property is farm assessed with a, um, forest, uh, environmental plan that we run through the forestry, uh, for lumber and woodland conservation.
Okay, let me stop you there. We had marked, uh, oh-eight, and I only have one of these, so I'll show it up. Does this, this is a, uh, plot, lamb, or a map of your property? Is that correct?
Correct.
And does that accurately depict the property as it exists today?
Uh, the, the structures, correct, and our pathway and our horse trails, yes.
Okay, you gotta talk into the microphone. Okay, so, uh, you were just describing the property. Just describe it based on what's on oh-eight.
So the front part of the property is the residence. The middle portion of the property are all our paddocks where we keep the horses, which is a very narrow.
So just please, may, may, maybe you could come to the other side so we could, we could look at it while talking?
Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be better. Why don't we move on?
So is this, just frame reference, is this a tax map that we're looking at, or?
It's a, it's a enlargement of the actual survey that I had taken of the property.
This, this is your survey?
Correct.
All right, uh, well, that, if you could submit that into the, not, right here.
Oh, eight.
Subsequent, okay.
It's already been marked.
Okay, wait.
Go ahead.
So, again, the, the front portion of property is a, is an operating residence. We've got a swimming pool here, just like a normal residential property. The middle section is where we keep all our horses and our paddocks, and as you can see, just the, the nature of the property itself is very narrow. And then back here is our woodland management that's, um, uh, under a plan that's reviewed every five or ten years, I forget. And they indicate what we should take down and where we can take down trees in order to keep the forest healthy in that area.
Is that part of the farm assessment?
That's part of our farm assessment, correct.
Okay. And do you have to be concerned about wildlife, for instance, in those trees? Is there any requirement related to that?
Sure. Our woodland management plan indicates that this whole area is a risk-four zone, and
Rank four?
Rank-four zone with, um, habitat for timber rattlers, as well as potential nesting and occupation by the, um, the owls, the, uh, get the name of the owls.
Would it be the barred owl?
Barred owl, thank you.
Okay. And when you say this whole area, you're referring to the rear of your property?
Um, the, the, the forestry management, um, addresses the rear portion of the property, but the actual habitat extends all the way up to here.
The mid portion?
To the mid portion, if not even further. I believe it runs through this, this is a conservation easement that was granted at the request of, of this original owner because of his farm and his interaction with this new neighborhood that was going to be built. So they instituted this, this fifty-foot-wide easement that cannot be touched.
And you're referring to the northwest side of your property, is that correct?
Correct.
And where is, where is your home? You said that you live on Emma Lane. Where is that?
That would be right here.
And that would be the one?
I'm sorry, lot sixty.
And it looks like, okay, lot sixty, block fifteen, eight oh-one.
Correct.
Correct. And that's where your wife lives with you?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and, um, okay, how, how long is your border with the applicant's property, do you know?
It's approximately twenty-six hundred feet, about a half mile.
And, um, you have photos as well. I'm gonna give this up. Is there anything else you wanna tell the board about this property?
Well, just to indicate that there is an existing path, and we shared pathways between my property and Rob, the old owner of this property, there's an a, um, network of trails that we used, that we use to access other parts of the property, and this particular project is actually runs behind my property, so it's going to restrict my access to the land owned by Jackson, which is all the wetlands and all the wooded areas beyond.
Those trails were used for what? For horses or?
For horses, for, you know, nature. We're big nature people. Like I said, I grew up in Jackson, not this area, but in another part of Jackson I grew up.
Anything else you wanna tell the board about oh-eight or none?
Other than the fact that one of the discharge lanes that they, that are going to be right here is gonna directly overlook what would be our backyard, and the proximity concerns me in terms of privacy of, of what we're going to lose considering how narrow the property is.
So you're, you're referring on this exhibit to the, uh, the south, the south side?
Southwest, it's.
Southwest side of, of the property, correct?
Correct.
And the the lane that goes out to East Veterans, that would be a turn right in and right out, correct?
Correct.
As you understand it. Okay. I'm gonna hand this up just in case anybody wants to. And if you would, uh, starting with oh-two, I believe, you know, it was took it. Okay, we took it. Thank you.
All right, I'll do my best, but with all due respect, I, I think a lot of people that have spoken either don't live exactly next to this property, or have a, a small contact point with this property, maybe two-hundred foot of their backyard. I'm a half mile. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. So, so the pictures essentially indicate a
Well, let's, let's start with, I believe this is oh-two. Is this okay? Oh, it's in the bottom line. Okay, showing the board what's oh-two. Can you describe what that is?
So the, the, the series of images that I took are essentially what I see as I travel from the paddocks down towards the back of the property. These, I think they were submitted in not chronic, chronological order in terms of how I took them, but they essentially bear witness to what I will end up seeing as I travel the whole half mile of my property and looking over to this new project.
All right, so when you say that, you're looking at oh-two, three, four, and five, correct?
Correct.
And you don't have to necessarily go to each one, but tell us what you see on oh-two, three, four, and five as you travel your property line.
So, so at the most, there's maybe some brush that will So, so at the most, there's maybe some brush that would obscure the property next door. But in some instances, it's a clear view with no brush, trees that are only about 20 feet high. And we're talking about buildings that are 300 feet long, 250 feet long. And from, from my standpoint, that's all I'm going to see as I travel this property. I'm gonna see a bank of windows with lights on at night. In the morning, all through the day, there's going to be traffic traveling behind these buildings, which are right behind my paddocks for loading, unloading, servicing. We talked about garbage. I'm concerned about garbage blowing onto my property.
Let me just, let me do the photos real quickly. The photo show, one photo shows a yellow house. I believe that's O two. Another one shows next, another one shows a fence, which is four. Are those structures all on the neighboring property?
They are.
Including the fence?
Including the fence, correct.
And all of the pictures, though, up, up to the fence, that's your property, correct?
Correct.
And all of these pictures were taking on your property, looking to the property that is to be developed, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And the, the images that show the yellow building and the red building is actually where the, one of the high schools will be built.
All right, go ahead. What else would you like to tell this board with regard to this matter?
So my concerns, my wife is more of the horse person, but I have concerns about maintaining the integrity of this property. I think that the, a lot of items that are overlooked is, again, we, we are a residential community and, and this is not a little impact to the community. Uh, this is a, a big project and it's, I, I want to be very clear. Money's not the issue. Uh, Mr. Rottenberg offered me a lot of money for this property, for my property, uh, which, which I did not entertain because it, it's not about the money. It's about a quality of life that, that we moved here for and the life that we live here. We are essentially farm people. Um, and, and this is, this school is not a farm oriented project. Uh, we, we kept the property, maintained the property as a farm. It's been a farm for, for as long as I know it's been around, as well as the, the neighboring property that, that Mr. Rottenberg owns or the applicant owns. And we, we bought into this area based on the fact that it's, it's a, a rural, rurally maintained area. We, we can't locate the horses anywhere else in the property. Uh, like I said, the backland, the back part of the property that's the widest is wooded and, and protected for our woodland management. And the rest of our property is very narrow and, and there's, there's no hiding from what's going to happen. And I, I wanna throw this out there and, and try not to be embarrassed about it, but this has nothing to do with who's building it. I was in the hallway and overheard somebody talking on the phone indicating this is, this is a biased rejection. This is not biased. My, my mother, I am the son of a living Holocaust survivor. She was born in a camp. So, and this has nothing to do with bias. This just has to do with quality of life concerns that I have, that, that I've grown up here. I understand there's some new people that have moved into town, but I grew up here and I don't own one property. I own four properties in Jackson, so I pay a lot of taxes myself, excuse me. And my kids, we did the public school route. We did do the private school route, but my kids don't have a private high school in Jackson. We had to bus them to Tom's River and that was an hour and change. And we never complained that we need to have a private high school here. It's just, we, we understood if we wanted to send our kids to a private school, where that school would be, and we had to accommodate. So again, it's not about the who, it's just about the what and the where. And, and this is just not the right where. The, the what, we can all contest that, yeah, sure, we need more schools and, and I understand the town's changing and growing and but it's the, the where that's really the issue. I, it can sometimes take me three, four minutes to pull out of my driveway as I wait for the circuit of cars to change. Either they're coming this way continuously and this lane's not, or it's the other way around. And, and I, I can't imagine that the traffic studies that were done are going to correctly indicate what traffic will be like. I, I live there. I didn't just do a two day study or a week study. I lived there every day and I experienced the traffic. Not even two weeks ago, there was an accident right in front of this property, took out two telephone poles and hit a tree. This is a dangerous section of road with heavily trafficked, heavy equipment, heavy trucks that travel up and down this road. And I know I'll never be able to make a left out of my driveway to go eastbound if there's a traffic light there. Because I know as that traffic light turns red, cars are gonna back up and I'll, and, and we've got that right exit lane right to the left of me. So when the traffic light's red, everybody's gonna go right. I won't be able to turn out. And then as the traffic backs up, I won't be able to turn left. So I, I'm concerned about a lot of things that, that, most of them are a little more personal to me because again, I am right next door to this. Uh, I have a vested interest in, in my way of life here. Uh, we, we've, you know, put a lot of hard work and money into getting what we have. And, and I feel like that, that has to be considered.
One, one or two other questions. Drainage, there the engineer testified about drainage that doesn't flow toward your property.
That's incorrect. That is incorrect. Uh, I get runoff. Every heavy storm, I get runoff directly from that property into my paddocks and into my side yard, which is adjacent to where the pool is. It turns into a little lake there. Uh, I, I've tried to remedy it from, from my side, building berms, but the, the water just overtakes those berms. And I've had to regrade the paddocks because they were becoming little swamps with the, all the runoff. So that is a concern as well.
Seven, does that show three of the properties essentially that you own in the area?
Correct. So that, that's the adjacent property I own. That's my residence and the, the home I bought for my mother is in Meadowbrook Village, which is a 55 plus. And I can't tell you how hard it is to get out of that property for myself, let alone 55 plus, you know, older community there.
Without repeating what other people have said, is there anything else that you want to say? Just take a moment and I'll hand this up. Anything else you want to say?
That, that's not something. I mean, just to, to wrap it up on my end, it's, again, it, it has nothing to do with the who. It's just the what and the where. Um, I, I had many of opportunities to sell this property and, and not have to deal with it. Uh, but, but that's not what I signed up for when we bought this property. Just like some of the other residents, we, we looked at, I lived in Jackson. I grew up in Jackson and we purchased this land. I wanted to buy land where I knew it wasn't going to be overdeveloped and, and this seemed suitable. We were not expecting, um, expecting a project like this, uh, in, in, in this area. And I would just like that to be considered. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we go again, we've lost one of our members. We've lost several members of the audience that have interest in this case. After 11 o'clock, there's a lot to consume here. I'd like to make a motion to continue some of night. We still have opposing arguments to make and I don't want to, uh, make a mistake last time. There's a lot to, lot to take on here.
Um, let me just, from the audience, how many more people would like to speak? I mean, it looks like we're almost there. It's
You still have closing arguments?
We, we do, we do have a very
We've been down this road before, what we did just late at night. There's lots of digest here. There's a lot of precedence here, a lot of importance here.
No, I understand we do have a
Time, let's do it correct. I have a motion on the floor that I made and it has a second.
Please, uh, take a roll call, please.
Mr. Brassim? Mr. Bernstein? Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Sullivan?
No.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Heller? Mr. Wall? Uh, Dr. Campbell?
No.
Uh, Mr. Herman?
No.
We have five noes.
There's one, um, I believe there's 10. Only nine people could vote. There are 10.
No, we have 10 people.
10 people, so there's only nine votes, I believe, eligible.
Uh, we have five noes and, uh, one, two, four yeses.
Yes, the noes carry, so we have two more left. If the noes carry, so, um, would you like to come up? Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last and your address, please.
Shirley Cino, C I N O, 42 Pembroke Drive. I raised my children in a town that I chose to go to. I paid very high taxes. We lived there for 35 years and I can guarantee you it didn't take 35 years for my children to go K through 12. But when they were out of school, I did not go to my town council and say, I don't want to pay these school taxes because I'm not getting anything from it. So I resent that statement that the gentleman made. I then moved to Jackson 12 years ago and I didn't come to the town council and say, I'm not paying those school taxes because I'm not getting anything from them. My taxes are paying for all school buses, whether they are going to private school or public school. I willingly pay these taxes for these children to go to school. But I'm against this school because I feel that it is not in the right spot. And I feel that this gentleman who told us about his little girl who's on a school bus for an hour. I have grandchildren on school buses for an hour, a special needs grandchild on a school bus for over an hour. He chose to move to this town, which does not have the schools that he wants. And I feel that he has to live with that. He has to explain that to his children. Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last and your address, please.
Hiroy Tabak, T A B A K, four Ashford Road. Thank you first of all for giving me the opportunity to express my feelings on the support of the matter. Um, I just wanted to say to that position, to the project, I think us parents and, and that position, we are on the same page for a lot of these issues. We don't want Jackson turning into Lakewood. We don't want traffic and we don't want a lot of these issues that you're bringing up. So all I'm asking you is to let us go through the proper process. The school hired professionals to do the traffic studies. We don't want septic back, backing, backing up at our school either. We don't want kids flushing the toilet and coming back to them, right? We're, I think we are on the same page for that. We're just asking you to please let the professionals do their work and we hope to live in harmony. Thank you.
Seeing you don't come forward, I would like to make a motion to close public comments. All in favor? To Bernstein, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Jennings, would you like to offer any closing comments?
Sure. First, I'd just like to thank the board and its professionals for taking two nights to listen to this application. And then I just want to kind of address briefly some of the comments made by the members of the public. What I don't think they understand is that this planning board's job is to enforce the zoning ordinances that are adopted by your governing body. And so the master plan and the zoning ordinance has selected this site for schools. This is a permitted use in the zone. And my clients, I instruct all of them when they call me and say, I'm thinking of putting a school in Jackson. I say, well, make sure you pick a zone that permits the school so that you go to the planning board. And we try to create a plan that satisfies all of the standards set forth in your zoning ordinance. So the application before you this evening is for a permitted use and it is essentially variance free. The only thing that we're asking for is to land bank 136 of the 503 parking spaces. Yet that's up to you guys because we have the space for it. We've delineated on the plan. We've addressed it with our stormwater management. And so I think what you have this evening is three choices. One, you can vote to approve the application with our request to land bank the spaces. Two, you can approve the application and say, no, you're gonna build those spaces now. Or three, you could deny the application, which I will be sure I'll be in court tomorrow uh, because this is a permitted use, which is essentially variance free. So I just want to thank everybody for their time and I hope that the board grants an approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion on this application?
I would.
I believe, I believe you already said you spoke, you said your closing comments.
I didn't, no, no, no. I thought he meant that I was, that was the last witness. I didn't give my closing argument.
We would not have let him go more than five minutes, but
I misunderstood you. I thought you meant, is that it? Are you, are you done with your, your clients? I'll keep it very brief. Okay, uh, it is permitted as to zoning only. That doesn't mean that you should approve this plan. I will just point out a couple of things with regard to traffic. Mr. Ray testified that all of his counts are based on the information that the applicant gave him. He did not rely on the Institute of Traffic Engineers, the ITE, which is the standard. Why did he rely upon the applicant? Because the applicant gave him that information. And I can tell you that applicants give him, applicants are biased, inherently biased. That doesn't mean that he gave the wrong information, but there's a certain amount of inherent bias whenever an applicant is trying to get something approved. Are we to rely on the applicant's numbers for trip generation without any independent analysis and without measuring against the ITE standards? That's what they're asking this board to do. Secondly, with regard to traffic, I didn't see a traffic plan with a signalized intersection. If it exists, he didn't put it on file 10 days ahead of time, to the best of my knowledge, as it should have been. That's another reason why it should be denied at this time. In addition, there were 12 items that the Ocean County Engineering raised. And yes, Ocean County has to address those things. But from what I understand, this, this roadway has dual, dual jurisdiction. So why not have this board address those things that relate to the, to the road as a, as a township road? With regard to the testimony of Mr. Borden, uh, you know, not every town has an environmental impact statement ordinance. Jackson does. There's a reason they have it. They have it so that you, as board members, will consider the environmental impact of every application that comes before you, where the building is going to be constructed that's more than 20,000 square feet. It is not appropriate to simply say, that's the DEP's job. It is not appropriate. You have dual jurisdiction. You have a whole ordinance that's several pages long for the purpose of addressing that, not just before the commission, but in this hearing. And quite frankly, um, you, you, it, it's impossible to address it fully when I can't even get the documents in, which show that a good portion of this site is a rank four when Mr. Borden's report says that it's a rank three, rank four. If you look at that exhibit that I gave you, it specifically shows where some of these buildings are and where some of the, the roadways are. It's endangered and threatened. It's endangered and threatened habitat for barred owl and timber rattlers. Now, you can decide that you're going to ignore that evidence and, and grant this application. But I would suggest that more study needs to be done, that the applicant maybe has a duty to hire a naturalist to figure out if they're going to displace any threatened or endangered species. There was supposed to be log times, weather times, uh, a specific written log of all the things that they did with regard to the E I S that Mr. Borden admitted that he did not do. His report says that they're going to issue, uh, drill wells. I got him to admit that his report was wrong as to that. But there was no second look at his report in spite of these objections. As far as I know, there were no revised architecturals on file ten days ahead of time. Maybe they were, but I certainly didn't see them. In essence, what you're doing is you're potentially approving something without all the appropriate information. And that is a reason to deny things before this board. Uh, I'm not going to repeat what the various people have said. I appreciate their comments and I appreciate the time that the board has taken.
I'd like to make a, um, motion, please. This application has a long way to go, uh, through many approvals uh, from the D E P and environmental commissions and all kinds of, um, checkpoints before a shovel will go in the ground. However, we have an obligation to the good of all. And we have an obligation from our oath that says we will follow the rules that we swore to uphold. This is a complying project in an approved zone. And I vote that we approve this project.
Do you want to talk about the land banking?
Sorry, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion, a second motion.
Then I approve land banking because I would hate to see over, uh, over, uh, paving. Let's, let's let some of that, uh, rainwater into the ground unless we see that we need it. And if we need it, then we'll ask them to build it.
Like to make the second chair?
They're permeable parking lots, so the drainage issue, I don't believe, I just want to make sure you're clear that they're not impermeable surfaces on the plans unless I'm mistaken. They're, they're permeable. They're draining lots.
They are. They're grass block.
So when you're contemplating the banking, no.
They're, yeah, they are.
Uh, perhaps the attorney can share.
Um, I believe a couple, couple things. So, uh, first, the applicant has agreed, uh, as a condition of approval, uh, that there will be enforcement mechanism, a lookback mechanism to make sure that the land banking is being appropriately, uh, conducted. Uh, that's first. Uh, second, there is a motion currently on the floor. Um, each one of the board members can put on the record as to why they approve it or why they don't approve it and put, you know, their facts and reasoning and everything like that, so the record in itself can be clear. Um, it, but there was a motion right now that is, uh, on the floor and it has to be, um, has to be looked through.
I made a second on that motion. I can explain following my reasons why. One, the septic system was challenged in so many ways. And with the image that they could just put sewer into the Jackson Township anyway if they could, and that was disproven. The testimony from Ian on all the sewer, he has a license that he's putting at stake and putting in there, but it's not his call. It's the D E P and other agencies have to approve it. So that has to still follow through, like, uh, Michelle Campbell said, that there's a lot of hoops they still got to jump through. As far as the county having so many items left to go through, they must be approved or they can't move forward. We can't do that. As far as voting on the, on all site traffic, we cannot use that in our vote without it being challenged. All the professionals are owned, who said it's a complying application, put their licenses on the line. All the professionals on the other side of the table put their licenses on the line. If they're lying, that'll be a problem for them. So they're putting their lives, livelihoods on the line also. The landbank, I agree with a hundred percent. We've used it many times. Don't forget, the students are not going to be driving in and the formula is based on students also. I see no need for that not to be landbanked for now. We'll see what happens. I don't think it'll ever be needed. The stipulation from the applicant, not putting no occupancy in there until the traffic light is in, which nobody knows how long it'll take, they will not put no, uh, movement, land use people in those buildings until the, the light is in. I think that's a big step forward. And, and what Dr. Campbell was referring to, I heard the constitution here tonight, heard my neighbors here tonight. And you're my neighbors. I've been in this town fifty years. I understand that. There's the constitution also, but we have an obligation to the municipal land use laws of New Jersey. That's the oath we took. And that's what we have to comply with. And it's a complying application and that's why I second the motion to approve.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brassim?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes, and again, I'm echoing Mr. Brassim. It's a complying application that follows municipal land use laws and I said, and I, I vote yes.
Mr. Fleming? Mr. Herring?
Yeah, I agree with the land banking. Um, I don't think you should have paved it round over unless you have to. Okay, if the kids aren't going to drive there, you probably never going to have to. Okay, um, just to reiterate what's been said, I took a note to follow the law. There's plenty of applications that are coming before me and others here that you don't like. But I took a note to follow the law and this follows the law. Okay, so I, I agree and I say yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, I vote, uh, yes. Um, it is a complying application. Uh, I know nobody wants anything ever built in their backyard and I do sympathize. But we have to follow the law and we swore an oath. And it is a complying application. It is in a proper zone. And with the land banking, as long as it is, uh, checked every year, um, I have no problems with the land banking, so I do vote yes.
Mr. Marzo?
It's unfortunate that I have to vote yes. Um, I do not agree with a lot of what has been put out. It's incomplete application, but it does, it is complying. But I would challenge all of you that to put pressure, get a new master plan and make sure that these things going forward are addressed. We do not have anything in our master plan right now that addresses schools like this. I don't believe really that you should be building campuses. Yes, a private school, one private school in a, in an area, that's fine. But three and four buildings in one area, I don't agree. But unfortunately, I also took an oath. I take it very seriously and I have to say yes.
Mr. Heller? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes, I, I would just like to echo a lot of what Mr. Marzo really pointed out, that a lot of this comes back to the master plan. And I think it's very important. I don't think, I don't believe that the master plan, when it was first put together, really envisioned these type of campuses. But it allowed it. Once it allowed it, 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 the master plan shows the properties which allow schools. Not necessarily, it wasn't the applicant's decision in which properties allow schools. So I really, you know, like to echo what you said and I would like to echo what Mr. Brassim said as well. Um, you know, with regarding the septic, again, it's not really the applicant's decision, so I vote yes. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, can I put, get a motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you and congratulations.
Uh, thank you. What about balance fight?